If we could call the meeting to order, have everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Leary.
Yes, here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mr. McHugh.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Fattacante.
Here.
Mr. Lahey.
Here.
Sorry. Seven present.
Seven present. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the September 20, 2006 meeting. Motion to approve the minutes by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor say aye, and any opposed, the minutes are approved. Under permission to enter, Madam Superintendent, are there any items?
Yes, several contracts. Mayor Martin. The first, University of Massachusetts, its Lowell, the Songus Industrial History Center, $33,060. This is to amend the dollar amount that's required to provide courses to enrich student content understanding for third, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade students. It's funding provided by the school department admissions fees account. The Cambodia Mutual Assistance Association of Greater Lowell, $12,000 to provide the Lowell Adult Education Center with an onsite program for 50 foreign, non-English speaking students. Funding provided by the Adult Basic Education Grant. The Lowell Transitional Living Center, $9,000 to provide recruitment, counseling, and coordination for 15 homeless students for Adult Basic Education GED preparation classes. Again, the funding provided by the Adult Basic Education Grant. And then Teach First Incorporated, $41,600 to continue instruction in the sheltered instruction English for teachers in six elementary schools. Funding provided by the Title III grant.
Okay. So wish of the committee?
Move approval, Your Honor.
Motion to approve by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Lahey.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay. We have unfortunately a rather large number of memorials this evening. First is by the committee as a whole, a moment of silence for victims and families of three school shootings throughout the country this past week, offered by Ms. Fattacante as one for James Searl, the brother of Catherine Keen, coordinator at the McHugh Alternative School at the Cardinal, O'Connell, and Patty Ryan, a paraprofessional at the Lincoln School. Mr. Searl was also a childhood friend and teammate of mine in several sports, very premature and young death. For Ms. Anne Hebert, mother-in-law of Richard Coffey, retired Lowell High School math department head. For John Farrington, brother of Alice Miller, parent information center clerk, and brother-in-law of Anna McInnesby, retired curriculum office secretary, offered by Ms. Dougherty. M. Joan Donahue, mother of Lowell High School teacher William Donahue, and offered by Mr. Lahey, John E. Lang, retired in 1988 as Lowell High School teacher and track coach. We could rise in a moment of silence, please. I don't believe there are any items under unfinished business or public participation which would bring us directly to the motions. The first motion is offered by Mr. Lahey. Request that the city provide the school department with the funding necessary to assist in the process of conducting out-of-state criminal background checks.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Seconded by Ms. Fattacante, Mr. Lahey.
Thank you. I put this motion in, in light of recent events, so I would ask that, I don't actually know if this goes over with you, Mayor, or if it just goes regular, however we send them over. But I would just ask that if this becomes necessary, that we need extra funding to conduct all the out-of-state checks that we're doing now, that we, in light of all the extra work. So, and the way I'm looking at this is almost as if it's overtime that the police and fire department asked for. So I can't imagine that it would amount to a lot of money, but I'm sure that we'd need a little bit of assistance, and it's going to benefit both the school side and the city side. So I would ask that we send this request over. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is approved. I will forward this on. I do know the police department has expressed a willingness to assist us in these background check efforts, and so I would expect any additional funding will probably be minimal, but, and the request would be well received. Next motion is by Mr. Lahey and Ms. Dougherty. Request the superintendent provide the committee with information on the possibility of broadcasting subcommittee meetings on either LTC or Lowell Educational TV, seconded by Mr. Leary.
Torrey, second.
Well, okay. Who wants to go first? Ms. Dougherty.
Thank You, Your Honor. I'd just like to disclose, I'm on the board at LTC, just so everybody knows that. I think it's part of our ongoing efforts to communicate with the community what we're doing to improve our schools, and there seems to be some interest in having access to viewing our meetings, so I'm looking at a way to make that possible for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lahey?
Yes, thank you. And I would just add that I know that the city council is looking into this, too, so maybe we could combine our efforts and with both of us looking to air our meetings, maybe we could come up with a solution that's faster and more economical for everybody. And I was thinking, you know, if, maybe we could even use something at the high school. I don't know if that's possible, or if it crosses the line with Channel 22 and Channel 8, but maybe, you know, we should just look at all the possibilities and try to get as many meetings open to the public as we can. Thank you.
Okay. If I could comment just briefly from here, I do know the council is, has been for some time trying to get its subcommittee meetings on TV. The problem now, at least in the city part of the government, this is the only chamber capable of broadcasting on TV. This chamber is used for not only the city council now, but also the school committee, planning board, and zoning board, and so it really becomes a scheduling issue with this room, as well as the folks from LTC. We are exploring possibilities of having the mayor's reception room wired for cable, but that's not here yet either. And so the idea of Lowell Educational TV is intriguing because it offers, you know, another potential alternative to that. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, if I could just add to that, I believe at the high school, we could do it either at the Lowell Educational TV studio, or they also had the Little Theater, but that, again, would be Channel 22. And I thought, I haven't spoken to anybody at LTC, but what if we had subcommittee meetings at one of their studios at LTC? Because I think they do have evening hours, and it would just mean physically meeting, you know, down the street. But these are some options to think about.
I think it's a very good motion and appropriate for, for all those things are appropriate for discussion, so we'll look forward to getting the report back. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Next motion by Ms. Dougherty and Mr. McHugh. Request the superintendent provide a list of potential consultants or outside agencies that could conduct an investigation of personnel practices involving individuals' core check and subsequent promotion. Mr. McHugh. Or Ms. Dougherty, I'm sorry.
Thank You, Your Honor. When we put this motion together last week, we hadn't met with the Corey Board yet, but since our meeting with them yesterday, I think this motion is not even necessary. I guess I'd have to ask my colleagues what they think, because the Corey Board is currently going to conduct an audit of the processes that the Human Resources Department went through in a particular core check that was, has been discussed recently. So I think that we're ongoing, this process is actually happening now. So I don't know if anybody else wants to add to that.
Mr. McHugh.
The only thing I'd still like to keep in there is there's an important piece about the, also about promotions within, and on how we're actually handling that as part of our personnel practices. So to have an outside agency look at that wouldn't, just to see if we're heading in the right direction. That consultant could give us a good, some good insight on how do we handle promotions? What information are we gathering? Are we properly just gathering all the information and looking at it in the proper way?
Ms. Fattacante.
Thank You, Your Honor. You know, probably Mass Association of School Committees has dealt with the same dilemma through other school departments, so it's very possible that they have assisted other school districts with reviewing policy, looking at other cases. Maybe the outside agency would in fact be one of our own internal organizations who's probably had to deal with the same crisis. Maybe we should extend some, and ask whether or not they have in fact dealt with this crisis. If they have in fact dealt with it, could they send us information on what their, what their recommended policies are? And if they haven't, who, because I'm sure we're not the only school district who has had this problem. Who did they refer the school district to? I'm sure that they probably are a great resource, and, because they probably deal with this all the time. So maybe this needs to go, if it's, if it's okay with Mr. McHugh and Ms. Dougherty, that might be the first place that we look, and rather than, rather than trying to figure out what agency or what outside source, let's, I mean, we pay for the service. Let's, let's see if they can, if they can, if they can step up to the plate and give us some assistance. And if they can't, can they recommend to us another agency that would in fact be able to, to do an examination for us?
I think that's a good, that's a good suggestion.
Because all we're looking for is a policy review.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Ms. Dougherty?
I think then we should amend it to say, you know, given that the Corey Board is going to be doing their audit, we're looking for some recommendations or feedback from, we could start with MAS-C, rather than leaving it as, you know, this generic, some outside consultant, to specifically say MAS-C.
So, do we want to have an amended motion?
Yeah.
That the, would that be acceptable to Mr. McHugh and Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
That we, that we simply inquire with Mass Association of School Committees what policy recommendations they could make to us, and, or could, or if they can't, what outside recommendations they could offer to us? Because I think that, you know, that being, I think, they're a clearinghouse of information. And if we're having a problem, other people are having the problem, and if they aren't, they're going to be. So they might as, so Mass Association of School Committees might as well get into the, you know, the groove of trying to figure out what the best, what the best solution is.
Okay. Motion then to amend the motion by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye. Any opposed, the amended motion is approved. Next motion by Ms. Dougherty. Request the superintendent provide a report to the Technology Subcommittee detailing the timeline and rationale for the selection of X2 data system, as well as schedule and process for transitioning and implementing the new system, seconded by Mr. Leary. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. My intention with this motion is to really go back and look at the timeline of the decision we made to purchase the X2 data system, and the schedule and the steps that we went through in transitioning and implementing the new system, because it seems like we had quite a bunch of scheduling snafus that have been specifically attributed to the data system. And although I understand that whenever you go to a new system, there's going to be glitches, I'd just like some reassurance that we followed very clear steps. We had a plan in place, a timeline that, you know, really was built into the possibility of glitches and things like that, because this was a major concern I had last winter when we were first talking about purchasing this data system, was that we would have a very specific timeline, a very planned approach of how we were going to transition to this new system. And I'd like to take a look at how that actually evolved and happened. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Lahey?
Thank you. I'd like to ask that, I don't want to be a bummer on this, but I was satisfied when we met with, I think we met with the Technology Subcommittee, and we met with Mr. Lang, and we went through all the reports, I was happy and assured that we were going to get the best system. I think we'd be better off right now at looking at what we're doing to resolve the problems. I understand what you're saying, we want to take a look back, but I think more importantly, we should be focused on right now. Are the computers running? Is everything okay over there? Do we have the right people working on this system? Are the people trained properly that are using this system? We're in negotiations right now. If people didn't get back to learn this system, well, then that's something that's got to be negotiated into our contracts when contracts come up, because we've got to have some control and say to people, when we implement the new system, you have to work 10 extra days, and you're going to get paid for it. So I don't see what the problem is. If we, if we were too lenient and we said, geez, everybody come back a week, you know, come back at your regular schedule, a week from when school opens, and learn a new system, then shame on us. We shouldn't have done that. So I think that we could take a quick look at it, but I think I'd really want to be focused on what we're doing now, and is the problem fixed? Because, and I know we've had some problems at the high school, but, you know, there's still computers down, and there's still people that aren't properly trained on this, and, you know, we should exercise all our rights right now to get this going and get it working properly. We've invested too much money and time into this to, to really take a look at the history of it. We should be progressing with it and be very aggressive.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, I'd just like to add, my idea with the history, the rationale piece, is because the reasons we purchased this data system need to be brought out again, so then we can look and see, is it actually delivering on what it's supposed to be delivering on? I have no problem with getting, getting a current update. In fact, I think it's absolutely necessary, I agree with you. Where are we today? But I think we have operational systems issues in terms of how we manage this big school district, and I think we need to look at the steps in the timeline that went into place. If we were implementing this, you know, after summer school, for instance, that's way too late, in my mind. And I, you know, I think, I'm not looking for a detailed historical account, we're talking about, you know, six months ago, but to look at what was X2 supposed to deliver? And in fact, is it delivering it? And if not, what are some ways that we're going to make that happen? That's really my idea with the rationale. But I think your update, current status is, is a good suggestion. I agree with it.
I just have one other thing to add. I'm sorry.
Mr. Leary?
Well, I just want to say that I agree with what you said, but, you know, if we're not putting enough money into our technology infrastructure, then this proves it, and we need to be putting more money into that, and training, and we need more managerial rights that ask people, you know, we need to get a new system up, you need to work extra hours for pay, and we need to exercise those rights. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Leary?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to really make an amendment to this motion, if I can. I like the intent of looking at the timeline, I think you have to do that. I think the, the focus here in amendment, mending the motion is really, where are we going to go forward to ensure that we're successful with this? And I, and I think a lot of this has to do with training. I've been through processes when you get, processes, I've been through areas where you get new database. There are always, everybody always overestimates how quick we're going to learn it, how quick it's going to work, where the bugs are, what have you. Going through a timeline, I think is important, however, I think we need to put, I'll use the word "action steps" tonight, it's my key word of the day, action steps to get to a point where we're doing this efficiently and successfully. When we were sold on X2, the key, the keys here were, it was going to be better for the teachers, because they were going to utilize certain aspects of it, it was going to be better for the administration. Again, I wasn't happy, I think one of my motions, and was coached by John Lahey, was regarding scheduling. Scheduling was abysmal. One factor in the scheduling was the X2. Part of that process is because it's a brand-new database. Okay? Let's go through the process. I want to amend the motion so we have an actual action plan to resolve these outstanding issues. And I don't know, Madam Superintendent, if we have to go through all the outstanding issues, but if we do, I'm sure the other committee members will outline what those issues are. Thank you. I guess I'm looking for a second to that.
Second. So it's to amend the motion, to add that an action plan be developed to correct any ongoing deficiencies, by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. McHugh.
Does he want a timeline, too?
It's already in there.
It's already in there.
It's already in there. Mr. McHugh?
Yes, just briefly, I mean, I couldn't agree more. I mean, I, I understand the process that we went through. I think Mr. Lahey made some very good points. I think the system was chosen, it's a very, very good system. I don't think there's ever a perfect time to implement a new system. There's always going to be some bugs that have to be dealt with, there's got to be the training, you know, winter's training provided. I believe there was some training at the end of the year. I still think summer is the best time to do it, because it gives you the largest amount of time to get the system up, run some tests on it to make sure it's working properly. The probably, the perfect time would be over the winter holiday, but it's not long enough, because you could then run your old system, and then get ready for your new scheduling and provide all your training. I think the solution I see is the action steps is, I said it from day one, if we need someone onsite, I would be the first to stand here and say, let's get a consultant onsite to answer any questions. If a clerical person is having a problem entering, is not quite sure, have them, let's pay for the consultant to walk over and say, excuse me, this is the way you need to do it. Kind of, instead of picking up the phone or trying to go through a help menu, have somebody stand there and say, let me show you how to do it. I must say, that's the only answer, but I think that would have been a major help in solving this problem. I still think there's probably, still needs to be additional training, because everybody learns at a different pace, and I think that's going to be one of the solutions to this final problem as we move forward. But I think we're going to get through this, but I agree with Mr. Leary, and the action plan steps need to be identified. Where are we, and where do we need to go to get this finalized? So next spring, when everyone's picking their classes, they're entered, they walk home, they'll have a schedule, we won't be having children without schedules when school starts, and having lines at offices, trying to find out, I'm not in a class or in a class, and what reports do we need to run to validate everybody has a schedule? So I couldn't agree more with the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I think one thing we also need to consider during this whole process, and as you're getting your reporting back, is exactly how pervasive this issue is. The anecdotal information, and I recognize it as just, you know, individuals who've approached me, is that this system has been very effective at the majority of schools in our district, that the issues have been particularly focused in specific areas and at specific levels. So I think that before we, or I guess as part of our review of the selection process, you know, recognizing that understanding history makes it easier to make better decisions in the future, to look at our current status, but thirdly, to recognize that there may be specific areas where this has not been implemented particularly well, where perhaps the challenges were greater because of the nature of students. But I think that it is important to recognize that, again, and I'm only going on information as it's made its way to me, I can't say with any assurance that this is true system-wide, but the information I've gotten from individuals working with the system has been extremely positive, and the sense is that there are only particular areas where it has not been implemented perhaps as effectively, and perhaps that's where our focus would be best, best directed.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Mr. Lahey?
I just had, I was a little confused. When you were talking about a timeline, what were you talking about? Were you talking about the timeline in chronological order when we hide this, or a timeline to get this fixed?
I was talking on two levels, the process of selecting, the database system, and the process of implementing it.
But did Mr. Leary, did you want a timeline to fix this?
Well, we need a timeline to go through the whole process, okay. But I think the timeline we want to do to get the action plans identified reasonable would be by the next meeting we have, actually get, I mean, I guess that's a question for the superintendent or through the operations person. I mean, I would estimate the next meeting, what's it, October 18th, we would have action plans identified and outlined, and we can have further discussion at that point. You're probably going to have to have a, a technical, you're going to have to have a subcommittee meeting, obviously, to go through some of the specific action plans. But I think two weeks should be at least, I mean, I'm looking for some guidance here in terms of what timeline we can get this.
I'm assuming the committee doesn't, doesn't want to rehash why we chose X2, or revisit that decision. I think the focus you're wanting, as I'm hearing the discussion, is on, is a, is a brief look at what the steps were to implement, where we've run into issues, and what the plans are to address those, and we'll have, we can certainly have a preliminary report for you on the 18th.
Yeah, and I think part of the process would have to include a timeline of when we started the training. So we purchased X2 and, you know, May whatever date, we out, we sat down with the consultants in regards, not to buying it or selecting it, but here's how you're going to help us begin the training. And I think we'll learn a lot from that, that we were overestimating the whole program, and we'll definitely prevent that in the future.
Okay. Next motion is by Mr. Leary. Request the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services report to the school committee and the Discipline Alternative School Program Subcommittee the number of open spots for each alternative school within the system. In addition, request the Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services conduct a survey of every principal within the Lowell school system, the number of students within their respective school who would benefit or need placement into the existing alternative programs if spots were made available. Seconded by Mr. Leary, Mr. Leary?
Thank you. Quickly, I just want to, the purpose of the motion really is to begin a process, I guess, to get a survey, really to plan for the budget for next year, to identify a, what is our need for alternative schools? And I sat down, you know, with a variety of different people throughout the past nine months to see exactly how the alternative schools are functioning. Kevin McHugh, Committeeman McHugh is a lot more knowledgeable in the alternative school program than I am, but I've, you know, I've even talked to him regarding it. I think we have an excellent alternative program. I think if we can identify additional, I call them customers, but I guess they're really students, who would be better suited in this type of environment, we need to identify them and then make the resources available. So this is a first step in the process, to identify who are the students that would benefit. I think using the, obviously, the principals in that area would be good. I know how the process works now, they have a certain number of set seats, for lack of better terminology, and then central office has a certain number of seats to fill these, these areas. I'm, what I'm, what I'm guessing, my hypothesis here is we need to hire more instructors in the alternative area. And that might be incorrect, it might be correct. Now, in getting involved with the alternative area, it's more than just discipline problems. There's a whole select other area that I really didn't really, that I personally didn't focus on, but I think we still need to look at, I think when I ran, I said we wanted to really kind of, the words I used were remove the encouragables from the classroom, for two reasons. One, it obviously, it impacts the teacher in the classroom from educating the students. Two, we're not helping the quote-unquote "encouragable" by keeping them in that setting, we have to find a different dynamic to help educate them. So it sounds pretty good in, when you say the language, but I think what we need to do is really, one, what is the population that would be best served? I sat down with the Assistant Superintendent, Ann Murphy, regarding how to really, oh, God, catalog, that's the wrong word, process this in an appropriate manner to see who these students are and what populations they fit. So when we sit down in the budget process, budget process in January, we can have some solid information to say, you know what, we got to, you know, add five teachers for the Malloy, Malloy High School, or we don't need as many at the Laurel. Just, we, we have a better process of doing it. I think we need to enhance it. I may be wrong, but it's, it's the first step in the long process. Thanks.
Mr. Lahey?
Thank you. I think this is a very good motion, and I think this is something we've been talking about for years, and we don't do it. So hopefully, this motion will make us really focus on this problem, because during the year, we save so many slots per school. And what ends up happening is sometimes we say, well, you know, we may have a few kids that are going to act up in the spring, and we don't let kids in early enough. And we've been to most of these schools, the kids, you know, they have their problems, but when they get in a smaller school setting, they're great kids, and they have a lot of potential. So I think this is a great motion. I hope we really act on it now and deal with this problem. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Next motion by Mr. Leary. Request the superintendent provide to the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee and the school committee as a whole, the updated list of Lowell schools which were determined to be in need of improvement by the Massachusetts Department of Education, further provide to the Subcommittee and to the school committee as a whole, specific action plans for each school in order to ensure they will meet their federal adequate yearly progress targets in Fall '07. Seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Seconded by Ms. Doherty, Mr. Leary.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the Superintendent for helping me draft, actually, this particular language. I guess the process really here is when I, you're doing some brainstorm, and we know we've made changes in certain schools like the Robinson. That's a dramatic action plan. So that's really gonna be easy. Robinson School, we changed the principal, we added a vice principal, we did certain things with the curriculum in that area, I think block, with block scheduling of his classes, what have you. That's kind of like a dramatic action plan. Sometimes I think, what I'm looking for is a specific action plan to each school. And each school's gonna have a different, unique population, different circumstance, different educators in that room, what have you. So, I derive some of my thought process here, and this is the only thing I throw out as an action plan, other than curriculum, which is what I think I'm gonna get back, is our curriculum has changed to X, Y, and Z, which I think is good. But I think a specific action plan, when I'm thinking about MCASs, I agree with the philosophy, you should never teach to the test, because I think that's a poor way of going about educating a student. Okay, that's easy said. But I do think we need to start practicing, and this is my little head here, not anybody else's, I do think we need to start practicing taking tests regarding to the MCASs. And I think of it along the lines of almost like a series of conversations I had with a headmaster, just throwing out some ideas regarding, maybe you send them a homework assignment every other week with three types of mathematical questions that are related to what the MCASs may cover. It's not graded, there's not a lot of pressure on the student, but there is some type of, we're getting involved, we're preparing for something that's, that's actually gonna happen, we're not teaching to the test, our curriculum is sound, our curriculum will be of assistance to MCASs, but now we're practicing something. In any sport that you play, in any instrument you play, if you're not practicing what you're doing, you're not gonna be coming to the, coming to the plate with your full game. So something, I mean, that's just my mind around an action plan that's simple, it doesn't cost a lot more work for the teacher in the classroom, it doesn't interrupt the current curriculum. So you got dynamics going from major changes at the Robinson School, for an example, where we really, we took the administration and changed it in that building, and we added resources in the administration, we changed the actual specific curriculum in that building. Good. If we need to do that in other locations, let's start making that point, those plans now. If not, if it's something as simple as, our curriculum is sound, we think everybody's in line, then let's make some certain changes regarding how we approach, we're gonna take a test. I mean, it's just my thought, it may be not one of your action plans, I'd like to get your, obviously, Madam Superintendent, you're the professional here in this area, I'd like to get your feedback as to how we need to attack it. But I think that we need specific action plans for this school, that school, and the other, because each one's a different dynamic. Each one is having challenges in other areas with the MCASs.
Thank you. All those, Ms. Fattacante?
Through you, Your Honor, to the Superintendent. So what information that will I see from Mr. Leary's motion that I'm not seeing in the school improvement plans?
Madam Superintendent?
I'll start with the school improvement plans and see if they address with enough, some of the broader issues that, that Mr. Leary is identifying. But I'll start with the school improvement plans.
Because this information is important to have, and I would hope that the material that Mr. Leary is discussing in his motion, we're also seeing in school improvement plans. Now, it's very possible that we might need to broaden the scope of what happens in those plans to include this information, but I, I mean, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but I clearly want this information included, so maybe it's an addendum to the, to the school improvement plans. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Leary? Or Ms. Martin, I'm sorry.
And I think the school improvement plans certainly are the place where this information is kind of brought together. Our timeline for the next presentation of those to the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee?
I don't have that yet on the top of my head. Well, I'll get that certainly for you.
I mean, generally, it happens in the, in the spring, as I understand it, and I'm going on memory at this point. So that we'd be looking at like a March timeframe, once we've had the MCAS results and had an opportunity to incorporate them into the next year's planning, is my sense. And perhaps maybe at the next Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee, we can talk about comparing what the school improvement plans include to what Mr. Leary is looking for, to see if there are any holes. I do suspect that, that really, the adequate yearly progress is what really the key indicator that, that drives school improvement plans to a large extent, and that all of our goals are based on those kind of, that kind of progress, and using the measures that we have in place on, based on MCAS, based on Terranova, the variety of testing that we do over the course of the year. So I would think that we should be able to, within the Subcommittee, be able to make a fairly accurate comparison as to what the information, the additional information that Mr. Leary and any other committee member are looking for, to ensure that it is included. But I do know that the bulk of it is already encapsulated in that process.
Mr. Leary?
Just real quick, and I acknowledge that these plans exist. What I'm trying to do is start saying, let's, let's really think more dynamically, and I gave out a simple, simple hit that might be able to be workable, and maybe it isn't, but I think it's something where, in my mind, when you're doing something, if you're running a road race, you know, it's a marathon, well, you just don't wake up the day and get out and run it.
Right.
That's just my process, and I just want to see something in line.
I think it's, I think it's an important, important work that we can do with the Curriculum Subcommittee.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed? Motion's approved. Next item, Subcommittee Reports. The first is the Athletic Subcommittee Report and Approval of the Minutes, September 25th, and Report of the Meeting, October 4th. Mr. McHugh?
Thank you. The Lowell High School Athletic Subcommittee met on September 25th. I'll give you just two separate reports. And on the first one, myself along with Regina Fattacante and John Lahey were present as members. Also present, and it was Jim Leary, a school committee member, and from the administration was Gene Franco, interim Deputy Superintendent, William Samaras, Lowell High School Headmaster, and Brian Martin, Director of Physical Education, Health, and Athletics. The first item that was discussed was basically a program update. It's something that I had requested, just to get a sense of, we have a bunch of new coaches this year, just to get an overview what the program is about, where we're going. We've also instituted back through the budget process, some positions that were eliminated a number of years ago, and we wanted to see where the trends are. One of the action items that's coming out of this is to actually get a number of students trying out by sport, so we can really see where the trend of the, of the students needs to be focused on. So if, for example, more students are really going towards the lacrosse team, and we're seeing a greater number of students trying out and trying to participate in that, we could possibly send, you know, the coaching and allocate our coaching staffs as needed to those priorities. So that's an ongoing issue we'll be continuing to work on. Brian Martin also explained that he'll be providing training to the Friends of Lowell High School and the parent liaisons to ensure that fundraising efforts are consistent with our policies and the mission of the School Department, which I think is a very important issue, so they're not just deciding on what they're going to do, so they're really kind of using their concerted effort to focus on our mission statement. The biggest issue of the night was the Middle School Cross Country Program that was started up through our intermurals. We received a request from Steve Gendron, who is the coach at the Immaculate School, to see if he could participate. And actually, that was intriguing, that one, that one of the Catholic or parochial schools is now seeing some interest in getting involved in some of these meets that we're having. And we know that these students, some of these students that attend these schools will be coming to our high school, so we didn't want to just say, you're on your own, go do, you know, go off and do your own meet. So we entertained the idea. He spoke very much in favor of getting involved and having some participation if it was possible. So that's, that turned into a nice discussion about how could we make this happen? And one of the action items that was sent back was, the more or less, we always have to talk from the legalese, is how could the city protect themselves due to the fact they are not students of the Lowell School Department? So we sent Mr. Martin back to work with the legal department to kind of draft up and identi, of, an agreement that they would sign, releasing the City of Lowell from some future harm. And also, how would this be worked out? Because this starts in a matter of a week. And at that time, Steve Gendron was going to go contact some of the other communities, and so was Mr. Martin, to see if there would be any other teams interested, so we wouldn't just say, you know, only one would be coming in. Next item was discussed was the Athletic Training Room. They'd be, they're working on making a new athletic training room in the high school, which is in the back of a gymnasium, so it would have equal access very easily for male and female athletes, so that they can get in without having to go through locker rooms. So there was a report of progress on that. For informational purposes, the, he has applied, an application to the MIAA on behalf of Lowell High School to host the 2006 Super Bowl Championships, which would be, I think, a great project for us, and it would highlight our new field, our new turf field. We have the parking lot available, we have a seating capacity available to host such an event, and potentially, some revenues could come back into the city from hosting an event, as well as, you know, the restaurants in the area would make out some pretty well, because there'd be a lot of traffic. They estimate about 3,000 or 4,000 people would come into a game, those various games. Also, on top of that, he liked to resonate an idea regarding Thanksgiving Day. We used to have some type of function in the morning to invite the athletes and various elected officials, just to kind of showcase what we're about. And this year, he had an idea about having something like a breakfast or something that morning for the school committee members and city councils, but also the Haverhill School Committee and city councilors, to come out, to see the facility, get a tour before the game, and see the whole complex, or what we've done with the, you know, the whole Martin complex with the softball field, and kind of highlight that, and just kind of get a chance to say hi to some of the people that we always don't get a chance to see. So that was something he was working on, an idea. So there was really, that was a report of progress on that first meeting, and I'll present that as a report of progress. I have, we had a meeting tonight, which I will follow up after we accept this as a report of progress.
Motion to accept as a report of progress, Your Honor?
Okay. So moved by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The report is accepted. Mr. McHugh?
Thank you. Tonight, the Subcommittee did have a follow-up to this meeting, and we met prior to this meeting. And the important issue that was discussed was the Middle School Cross Country. We received a liability form that parents would sign, and their children would, you know, on behalf of their child, giving them the parochial schools permission to allow their children to run, and it would be used as a possible way to keep the city out of harm. Beyond that, we also instructed the Athletic Director and Mr. Samaras to work with the city solicitor, to also see if the, we require each school to provide us a certification of insurance, and also naming the City of Lowell on it as a rider for the various, you know, one-day events that would happen. We're probably talking four events, they would be running out at the Shed Park, so they would have, that's possible, something they can put on. So we're looking to make sure we're protecting the city's interests as part of this. The second thing was also discussed was to make sure that all the students that are coming in from a team that we have no control over are, are in good academic standing, and also have, you know, non-absent from school. So we're gonna put that onus on the coaches that will be coming in, that was submitting a roster, to ensure that all the forms have been filled out, and every child is eligible to participate, and also should, they will be signing off that the child's in good academic standing and has a very good attendance rating. So those were kind of the items we're moving forward on, we're giving them the go-ahead. We have a form, and we've given the approval to Mr. Martin to move forward in this direction. So I would make that in form of a motion that we move forward, because the meet starts in about, I think, a week or so. So we want to give every team the possibility to get in on our track meets.
Form of motion for what?
Motion to approve this program, to allow parochial schools to participate in the Middle School Track Meets, by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Mr. Leary, subject to the conditions you outlined. Ms. Doherty?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a couple of questions, and I apologize, I wasn't able to make the athletics meeting, but I'm just wondering if it was discussed at all, how we're physically going to include more children in the track meets? Because I've been out there at Shed Park, and right now, we've got all our middle school kids, and there are hundreds of kids. They run all the boys at once, then they run all the girls, and it's almost like a stampede. I'm not sure if there's a plan of, would they come when our middle school kids come, or would there be additional meets? That would be one question I had. I have another question to it. Thank you.
Mr. McHugh?
These items were discussed in a Subcommittee, and I think over the last couple, the, the program is, right now, we only have, just as a follow-up, we only have one school interested. We surveyed all the schools, some of them are doing different things, and they, they actually are looking at possibly doing what they're calling a super meet at the end of the year, which would be the top children from each school in our program, the top children from theirs, so it would be a more controlled meet. So I think that's what they're pursuing this year, and right now, we're only allowing one additional team to come in. Well, we're not allowing, but that's the only interest we've had at this point, one school, which is the Immaculate, to come in with their team and just participate. So it's, I've been there as well, it's, it's very busy. I mean, I know there's a lot of students running, but I haven't seen it as far as chaos or anything, and it seems to work. I know they're working, last year was a year in transition, I think they're looking to improve it. They're talking about maybe even subdivide it a little bit more, to kind of have more races, instead of just having two flat races, break it out into four races. So they're, they're looking at really how do they develop this? But we don't want to shy people away, because I think it's also, there's a ton of parents that come out for this, which I think is great, that are staying there, and they're proud to see, the last place child, it got a huge bunch of people clapping. I mean, I've been there, and I know you've been there, and that's what it's about. Everybody can be involved, and it's a way to exercise, I think it's a way to keep people involved. So we don't want to shun anyone away, and I think also recognizing the fact that this is the feeder system to the high school. Some of these children will come to Lowell High School, and it's great that they could then possibly participate at that level.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to say that sounds great, that you are thinking about how to, the logistics of including the school. And I would not want to exclude a school either, but another question that comes to mind that's related, is I know many of the, the private schools in the city have a ski program at the middle school level, where kids are bussed out to Neshoba. We have not been able to do that at the public, the middle schools here, the public middle schools in Lowell, except for the Sullivan. I know they tried to get something off the, the ground last year at the Daily, was not able to get the participation, because as you can imagine, skiing is an expensive sport, being able to get a bus. And I'm wondering if there's any opportunity to explore the possibility of joining up with some of the private schools to, you know, take some of our public school kids on the bus or whatnot, so that the cost would go down for some of our middle schools, unlike the Sullivan, who don't have this program that's been in place for many years. I would be interested in trying to explore that possibility.
Well, I think that's, that's not necessarily part of this overall discussion, but I think I can take that back to the Athletic Subcommittee, we can explore it as an opportunity for the future. Obviously, times are the issue, because that'll be happening pretty soon, so I will bring this back as a topic, but there's, you know, we did not cover that material, so I really can't get into that discussion at this point.
Okay. Roll call on the motion?
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Present, okay. Mr. McHugh?
Here.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Lahey?
Yes.
Six yeas, one present, approved.
Okay.
And one last topic, on a report on the Thanksgiving breakfast, the Martin family has stepped up to the plate and will be hosting the breakfast. So Brian Martin and his family will be putting together the breakfast on Thanksgiving morning, so invitations will be forthcoming.
Can you make sure I mistakenly get credit for that, too?
Me too. Could we all get credit for that, please?
And Ms. Martin as well, yeah.
Okay, we'll put the Martin family, we won't use first names.
Okay.
That's, that, other than that, that's the report of progress.
Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Report is accepted. Next Subcommittee Report is the Joint Safety and Discipline Subcommittee Report and Approval of the Minutes of September 25th Meeting. Ms. Fattacante is the Safety Chair, Mr. McHugh is the Discipline Chair. Ms. Fattacante?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. The safety committee members who were present were myself, Ms. Doherty, Connie Martin, and discipline committee members present, Mr. McHugh and John Leahy. Other members present, Mr. Leary was also there. This came about as a result of the committee becoming aware of students in our public school system that were over a particular age. I will draw attention to the memo that we got from Ann Murphy and the committee can actually see by grade level how many students are above the, above the age that we have decided is appropriate. The subcommittee decided that two years above grade level, meaning two years above the age appropriate year, was acceptable and not above that. The committee also created a series of guidelines and, Your Honor, because it is so important, I just want to hit a few of them tonight so people, so that the public will understand because this was a huge issue. Just grade five, there were thirty-two students above the age appropriate setting in grade five, but the number spikes incredibly and I don't understand why. And maybe Ms. Murphy can explain that to us, Assistant Superintendent Murphy can explain that to us. Grade nine, there were a hundred and sixty-two youngsters who were above the appropriate age setting. And if you recall, Your Honor, this, this came up because we, we discovered that we had people who were twenty-one years old at the high school, twenty-two years old at the high school, who were not in a special ed program and that, that's, this is exclusive of students who are in special ed. And grade twelve, you can see, Your Honor, that the number is seventy-eight. Now, we met with Assistant Superintendent Murphy and we met with Headmaster Samaras. We came up with this, with this policy, age-appropriate educational settings, that two years or more will be reviewed by the principal or headmaster or designated to determine whether or not that particular student should remain in the current proposed educational setting or transferred to a more appropriate educational setting. The concepts to review, what the student's academic behavioral history were, including attendance. That, that, we moved that to the top of the list because we thought that that was far more inclusive of what the principal needed to look at rather than, rather than any other reason. That would include, Your Honor, whether or not the student had, because of a parental reason or because of an academic reason stayed behind, through no fault of the child, whether the child had been out of school for an extended period of time and was now coming back, having trouble catching up. I don't think that those were the major issues with the committee. I think the major issues with the committee were behavioral issues, which, which would cause the child to, to be, would lag behind. And so now, you've got a sixteen-year-old going to school with fourteen-year-olds in the same grade level. And it, and it becomes problematic. It becomes problematic with discipline, it becomes problematic with safety of the students who are younger. With the age of the student in relation to the age of their, their peers, is there going to be a problem with that? How will the student's age impact the functioning of the proposed educational setting? Does the student have an educational health or physical disability that continues to impact the student's overall performance? One of the things that we learned was, especially when we get to the high school level, the headmaster does have many options to recommend to students who are above the age appropriate setting and, and that he will take, he will take a more active approach at making those recommendations and looking at those recommendations. We started out with the recommendation of three years and above, but when we realized what that would mean, that would mean you would have a fourteen-year-old in a classroom with a seventeen-year-old. And we just felt that that age gap was too large and that we were not comfortable with it. I was not comfortable with it and I asked Assistant Superintendent Murphy to go back to the drawing board and the committee asked her to do the same thing and she came up with this policy. I'm feeling far more comfortable with the policy. I'm looking for my, for my, for my colleagues to also have input as to whether or not they're comfortable now with this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McHugh?
Thank you. I would also just like to take a moment to thank Sergeant Timothy Crowley. I mean, it was great to have him there. I mean, he gave some very good input. Actually, he actually recommended one of the changes. We had a discussion on, about a criminal complaint and he actually came up with the word issued and explained what that meant. And that was a revision that I, that I think is in here. And I definitely recommend that because we were trying to really walk through that process and he kind of was able to walk, you know, what's just a complaint and how it works. If it's issued, it's really a very serious issue that we need to address. So I, I want to thank him personally for that. And I think also the other amendments on the thirty calendar days are fine as well. I, I just want to reiterate the fact that this committee is seriously looking at this as a, as a concern, that we want to make sure that the age appropriation is the proper. And I know we had a lot of debate about the difference in age and it seems like it's extra work on administration, but I think our philosophy is, that's fine, that's a good thing. We want to make sure that they've looked over every child and they should be there, not just because, well, within a few years, let them stay. It's really, this is going to make everyone take that second look at the child to make sure that their grades are in shape, their attendance is in shape, that they should really be there, not just because they, they fall within the window. So I, I think that was the intent because if they're not a very good student of academics and not wanting to attend the school, we don't want them just coming and going because when they feel like it can cause them problems, because that's when the trouble starts. So I, I think that this policy is a major step where we need to be going with this. Thank you.
Ms. Fatacante?
Thank you, Your Honor. One thing I neglected to say is that not only does the policy create a safety policy within an educational setting, but it forces principals for a moment to step back and say, why is Johnny in the fourth, in the fifth grade and he's two years above the age grade? Why is Johnny still here? What, what, what am I not doing for Johnny? What service has this school department not yet provided to this child so that the child can successfully get to the next grade? So it, it puts a hold on that, on the, on the process of that student getting to the next grade and for the principal to take a very close look at a particular student and figure out what, what are we not doing to get this student to the next grade level? So it doesn't only help the classroom management as a whole, but it helps that student tremendously because now we're able to pull back and say, okay, what do, what do we need to do for this child? What have we not been doing to get this child to the next level? And it forces us to take a, a harder look at specific children, which is what we ought to be doing. And this, and this, and this, this policy will in fact force us to do that. So it's a good policy for everybody.
Okay. Is this Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that, that I was going to say that too. It, it has a positive spin to it. We worked hard on this. We rewrote it a number of times that night. So that's the positive thing that's going to come out. These kids that are falling behind will be helped. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I know this is on the agenda under new business. Is there desire to move that forward now?
Please, Your Honor, that would be great.
Suspension of the rules.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules to consider adoption of this
Motion to suspend?
By Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Your Honor, so the motion would be to adopt the policy as before us regarding age-appropriate educational settings.
So moved by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. I just ask, has this been reviewed by council at all?
Pardon me?
Do we know if this has been reviewed by council?
Do we know if this has been reviewed by council? Yes, we do, sir.
Okay.
A second to this, I'm sorry, I just got a
Mr. McHugh? Okay, role call.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay. Anything further on the subcommittee report?
Well, there is another subcommittee report. If the committee wishes to take it up now or, okay. The next subcommittee report, Your Honor, is the Safety Personnel Subcommittee that we had on September 27th. This, Your Honor, we, myself as chair of the Safety Subcommittee, Ms. Martin as chair of the Personnel Subcommittee, Mr. Leary was present, Christine O'Connor, the city solicitor, Jim Hall, James Hall, the school committee attorney, and Sergeant Fleming from the Lowell Police Department were there. We had a conversation regarding creating an arrest policy. Again, we had an incident that occurred and this committee took immediate action and this policy is the result of the action that this committee wants to take in the future. So let me give you the arrest policy that we would like to adopt, Your Honor. Any student who is arrested on school premises, including a school-sponsored function or has a criminal complaint issued as a result of an infraction, will be suspended from further participation in all school-sponsored and school-related events and extracurricular activities, including athletic games, graduation ceremonies, for a period of thirty calendar days from the date that the student is notified by the principal or headmaster. In addition, the student will be required to perform twenty hours of community service approved by the principal and headmaster. The headmaster and the principal may recommend certain types of community service that might be appropriate for the students. Again, we grappled with this policy because we really felt that if a student is arrested on school grounds, that is a, that is an enormously serious manner, matter, and that students need to understand that the powers that be take it very seriously and there will be serious consequences as a result of that. No officer wants to come into an educational setting and arrest a student. That's the last thing that wants to happen. I think officers at all times avoid that kind of situation. But there are occasions where the unfortunate reality exists and that does happen. And I think that when it does happen, students, other students in the high school or whatever school that the child may come from, need to recognize ramifications of allowing the situation to escalate to the level where they're arrested. So this committee, this committee very, very carefully looked at how we were going to send the clear message, that this is an unacceptable practice that should, that should occur. We came up with this policy. The other information at that subcommittee meeting was an opportunity for the members to address school principal Tim McGillicuddy at Principal Rogers School regarding the discovery of some .357 Magnum bullets that were found at the, at his school. We were able to discuss with Mr. McGillicuddy the fact that he did not follow school department policy. The, I think Mr. McGillicuddy clearly understands the ramifications of not, the potential ramifications of not following the policy. Some very positive things came out of that. Sergeant Crowley would meet with all administrators on Tuesday, October 3rd, which is yesterday, to give directions on situations that require when calls need to be made immediately to the Lowell Police Department. The district's crisis planning team will meet with Sergeant Crowley to update the district on emergency procedures and an updated emergency procedure manual will be, will be created immediately because a principal may not, you know, for instance, one of the things Mr. McGillicuddy said was, well, you know, I had to call the police about five or six times because of a knife incident. And so I, so I have in the past done that. And so we equated to Mr. McGillicuddy that this incident was on the same level and that he may not have looked at it on the same level, but we sort of drew out the implication of what, what may have happened. And luckily, that those events did not occur, Your Honor, but I think all of us want to err on the side of caution and, and as a result, this policy was created. We had assistants, we had the city solicitor, Christine O'Connor, assist us with some steps regarding the query process. We, and her assistance was incredibly helpful. We also had a meeting with Senator Pangiotakis the other day. We, we learned that we are going to be, having an audit take place of our specific, the specific failure with our particular query process. Tom Fleming, Sergeant Tom Fleming from the Lowell Police Department reporting on his analysis, reported on his analysis of some of the issues that face us. We also clearly understand that the people that we vest with the responsibility to disseminate query and receive the information probably needs to be changed in our school system because we vest a lot of responsibility on people whose job position does not lend themselves to be people who possess that knowledge. Because this is a very serious matter. Not that those people are not qualified and capable, but because, because it is a serious matter, we probably ought to vest more responsibility with the principal at each, at the building level. So I guess the policy recommendations that need to come from this is that the school committee in fact vote to, on the policy regarding arrests on school grounds. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you to the committee chairperson for doing that lengthy personnel report and safety subcommittee report. There's a lot of, there's a lot of different issues here. The query issue regarding our hiring practices and also our promotion practices could go on for a long time. So I'm going to, I don't know if we should take that under the personal subcommittee we had today or not, so I'm going to briefly just go over the meeting we had regarding the, the two bullet incidents at the Rogers School. Obviously, we all expressed ourselves saying this is something that simply shouldn't have occurred. We put a policy in place. What I articulated at the end of the meeting is the superintendent needs to ensure that her direct reports adhere to our policies and that appropriate, underlying quotations, appropriate consequences will need to be in place should our policies not be, not be adhered to. And I, and I'm confident based on our dialogue at that meeting that that action is, will be appropriately handed out, if any at all. The other issue I wanted specifically addressed too is exactly when we set policies, you can see that we're in the middle of a personal subcommittee. We've had, I don't know, five meetings regarding query checks. I want to thank Sergeant Thomas, Thomas Fleming for attending many of these meetings and working directly with the Assistant Superintendent of our HR department. He's logged in a lot of hours. I also want to thank, and I think the committee really wants to thank as well, is the Superintendent of Police for allowing him to do that. That's an additional work on his part. His role's been invaluable. And just quickly, really, the delegation led by Senator Pangiotakis bringing in the query folks was invaluable. We had a really good dialogue regarding other processes we'll be putting in place that we're going to work on, that other people will talk, you know, meticulously throughout the night and in other meetings. And I'll talk more, I guess, when the personal subcommittee minutes come as well on the query information. But I guess the real, the real important thing to note is to the public, committee puts policies in place, we adhere to the policies. If there's anything ambiguous regarding the policies, we need to make sure we're open dialogue between administration. If those policies are violated, the appropriate consequences should fall. And that's really epitome, and I think that's something we are confident we're going forward, that will take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to just comment back on the Safety Personnel Subcommittee meeting because there are a couple of points that I'd like to bring out that came out of that meeting. One of them I thought was a really good idea that my colleague, Ms. Martin, had and that we have what, public forums, or I'm calling them safety summits, I don't know where that word came from. But this concept of taking safety and discipline and respectful climates very seriously and letting the community know that we are now. We discovered through this query mishap that we didn't have a really good system in place for our gatekeeper, our HR department, to make sure that all the candidates, all the adults entering our schools, you know, have been cleared as much as we humanly possibly can to be in the school. So now we're developing that policy and that's part of the conversation we've had tonight. The Query Board's going to come in, audit our, our process, give us some suggestions. As came out earlier, we're going to look at MASC, see what recommendations they can make. We're going to strengthen that hiring policy. But this other piece of it, which I think is really important, is our communication with our community at large. And that's where these safety summits will come in, where we're going to hold these public forums by zone. And I, I think we talked about, we haven't firmed it up, but we talked about having one at the middle school level and then one at the elementary level at all our different zones, where parents, teachers, members of the community, people involved in law enforcement in the city who can come out and we can have discussions where we'll talk about not only the systems we have in place such as this policy, you know, regarding the bullets that wasn't adhered to, to kind of bring that up to the public awareness again, but also to look at some of the areas we haven't got as strong a policy as we need. And we can hear back from these people in the community. And one that came to my attention that also came out at that meeting was that we don't currently have a written policy regarding incidents of bullying. That the way it's been happening has not, the way it's been treated throughout, because we know bullying happens. I mean, we've all experienced it when we were kids ourselves, right? It happens, it happened then, it happens today, but how it's handled varies somewhat throughout the district. So we're looking to set a very clear standard and a set of processes that'll be in place at each school, elementary, middle, the high school, about these are the steps you go through when there's an incident of bullying. And like, one right off the top of my head would be parents are immediately notified, parents of all students involved. So one thing I'm personally looking for is some sort of draft from the school department of a written policy regarding bullying that we would then look at and we would bring out to these safety summits so that we could talk to parents and teachers about, you know, how does this seem? What are their questions? What are their concerns? What are their responses? Not only around the safety issue, which is huge and we're, you know, we're definitely taking that seriously, but also looking at this bullying aspect and how can we strengthen our commitment to providing the absolutely most safe and respectful climates that we can for our staff and for our students. And so I think that there's been, although it's been, there's been a lot of negative stuff that's come out and there's been mistakes made, I think, I feel personally grateful that we have been so fortunate in this district, that we have seen that we have been so fortunate in this district, that we have seen the challenges and we've turned it into an opportunity to really put our focus on safety and security at a time when all you have to do is look at the paper, turn on the TV, to know there are some very scary things happening out there. And we're not trying to cover anything up, we're not pushing anything aside, we are trying to be as open and forward and asking for feedback from the community, as well as being straightforward in what we're trying to do to make our schools better. And I just, I thought those were two very important points that came out of that meeting. And I think as we go forward, we will continue to be discussing these improvements. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I was unable to attend the meeting, but I did want to make a few comments on the Rogers School incident. As I read through the report and I see the, the public forums suggestion by Ms. Martin, I think that's a great thing. It's always good to talk to the parents, talk to the public. But the first thing that comes to my mind is, if we're gonna have these public forums, then the public needs to know that we're gonna have people accountable for their actions. If we're gonna talk about it, then we need to be prepared to have consequences when people don't follow the policies. The first point was that Sergeant Crowley was gonna meet with the administrators to give direction on situations that require calls to be made to the resource officers and police department. We should already know what we're doing. We should already know when to call the police. District crisis planning. Last year, I sat with members of this committee with Assistant Superintendent Ted Rurak, and we put many hours into a plan, and we have that plan. And that plan is in every school. All you have to do is walk up to it, go to the crisis, and pull out the card, and it tells you what to do. I just, you know, I'm sorry that Principal McGillicuddy isn't here tonight. I think he should have been. This just kind of shows us that we have a tolerance. I know every school is different, has unique situations, but for our tolerance level to be that high that we find two bullets in a school and we figure we can handle it on our own, I can't believe that we did that. I can't believe that something happened to distract him, that he didn't call the police. And I almost would, I'm kind of disappointed that, when he called the superintendent's office, that you didn't follow up with him to see what happened. Maybe you did, I don't know, I wasn't at the meeting. But if someone calls down to central office and says, "I found two bullets," and we instruct them, "Call the police, call the resource officer," I think someone should follow up and say, "What happened? What's going on?" For a principal of our schools to call and leave a message at 10 o'clock at night, it's unacceptable. And I would almost, you know, I don't want to see anybody get fired over this, but the young man that got arrested for this, he's gonna face some consequences. What's gonna happen to our principals when they disregard policy? We all take our jobs here very seriously. We put in many hours, and we seem like, seems like we go over the same things, year in and year out. I've been here five years now, and we've talked about all this stuff, yet nothing ever happens. And then I need assurance that something's gonna happen, some disciplinary reaction's gonna happen for that school. And we talk about having a summit. The parents that I've talked to, that's what they want to know. They want to know what's gonna happen. Students are disciplined every day, but it seems that people in the administration, we give them a slap on the wrist, and we say, "Hey, you gotta improve on that, you gotta do this, you gotta do that," but nothing ever happens. I was very upset about this, and, you know, some people ask you, you know, "What do you think? Should someone lose their job in a case like this?" I don't know. But I know that when I think about my kids in a school where bullets are found, and somebody just says, "Jeez, I'll handle it in a few minutes, you know, I'll do my own investigation, and then I'll handle it after," and, I mean, it's very, it's just upsetting to me, and it's unacceptable. And I would hope that we, as a committee, if we, we should ask, you know, what's gonna happen for this person, this individual? What's gonna happen for any principal at any school that does not follow the procedures? Because, you know, I for one am tired of coming in night after night for subcommittee meetings and then going over the same thing year in and year out. And I would hope that something severe is gonna happen. I know that a lot of positives is gonna come out of it, but it's just outrageous that we're gonna just sit here and say, "Well, he came in and he explained to us what happened." I find that unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
I guess I'd like to make a motion, then, to refer this back to the subcommittee, so that we can have a conversation about it in regards to the subcommittee, and it can be the dual, the joint subcommittee, however we want to approach it is fine with me, to come up with a proposal for, or perhaps to make suggestions to the administration regarding how we move forward from here in terms of disciplinary action.
I'll second that.
I do have to say, it's unfortunate that we had an opportunity to have this conversation, and it didn't happen.
Right.
That's troubling. But I, you know, I think we all recognize the seriousness of this, and I think that we all are certainly on the same page in terms of wanting to take the next steps in crafting an appropriate response. And I think that certainly the, the safety summits are step one. I think incorporating the bullying issue into that is certainly effective also, but that it, it's incumbent upon all of us to make these decisions in a thoughtful and considerate manner, and I think that we need to do that. And I would recommend that the joint subcommittee would be the place for that to happen.
Okay. All right. So that's a motion by Ms. Martin to refer this matter of the incident, the Rogers School, back to the subcommittee for further discussion.
In terms of, I'm sorry, just in terms of developing an action plan for that, what this subcommittee will be discussing is appropriate options for incidents like, for incidents when policies are not implemented effectively.
Okay. So that's seconded by Ms. Fattacante. Mr. Leary?
No, I absolutely agree with the motion. I just, I almost think this should be almost as a committee as a whole.
It practically is.
And I guess the only one who's not is me. But I guess I support the motion. I think obviously, you know, we have policies, we don't create them just to fill a book. We have policies that need to be adhered to, and consequences in an appropriate manner should be, should be managed, I guess, or handed out. So I definitely support it. I guess, I don't, you know, committee as a whole, joint subcommittee, I think everybody in this, on the committee, including you, Ms. Mayor, should be involved with it.
Okay. Ms. Fattacante?
Not specific on the motion, but one other thing that I wanted to throw you, Your Honor, to the superintendent. At that meeting, I did discover that an email had gone out to staff at the school, and I'm going to read the email and ask the superintendent a question about it. It says, dated September 22nd, staff, yesterday.
Well, Ms., we have a number of things pending. Can we dispose of the motion first? So we have, I don't think we need a roll call on that motion. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That matter's referred back. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Thank you, Your Honor. Says, "Two bullets were found in the lobby. Mr. McGillicuddy handled the situation and informed Dr. Bayer. Today, I received a call from Central informing me that the press had become aware of the situation, they were investigating the incident. Acting Assistant Superintendent Anne Murphy informed me that no one should speak to the press, including newspaper, radio, or TV. There is no need to discuss this with students at this time." That's the sentence of the email that concerns me. That concerns me. I'm a student at the school, I'm a parent of a student at the school, and you've sent out an email that says, "We will not discuss this with students." So we will not even have a discussion about the fact that the school is safe. We will, we will not, I don't, I don't understand why we said that. I don't understand why we said, "We will not," how can you not? Some fifth grader walks up to you and says, "Ms. so-and-so, is it safe to be here?" And a teacher says, "I cannot discuss that with you at this time." That's insane. That is, that is absurd, Your Honor. For us, as educators and policymakers, not to have communication with students, to assure them that they, that they continue to come to a safe school, is not acceptable. It is not acceptable. Did we have communication with students at the school?
I don't know the specific answer to that question. I know that certainly if students asked questions, faculty would reassure them about the safety of the school.
Okay. So then this sentence was, should not have been there. Because I would expect, Madam Superintendent, and I know you would expect, that if a student needed reassurance from a faculty member, that that reassurance would be immediately forthcoming, not, "Oh, I can't discuss that with you now." That, that, that just cannot be said to a youngster. That cannot be said. So this should not have been sent through email to people, because that obviously should not be our policy. And we need to find out, I think part of what needs to happen is, what in fact was conveyed to students. I know a letter went home to parents, but what, I think we need, as part of this joint meeting, we need to find out what was done with students, what was reinforced with students about what's acceptable to bring to school and whatnot. I think, I think we need to find out what happened in that instance also. Thank you.
The email you're referring to that went from the principal to staff at the school, is that?
It went from, it's, it says, it's to the, from staff, it says, "Yesterday, two bullets were found in the lobby. Mr. McGillicuddy handled the situation. Today, I received a call from Central," meaning the superintendent's office, "telling me that the press had become aware of the situation." So this went from the assistant principal to the staff members.
Staff. Okay. Mr. McHugh?
Yes. I can understand Mr. Leahy's concern. I know I've had these concerns for a number of years, and I think he said it very nicely. We create a lot of policies. I mean, we do. We put a lot of time and a lot of effort into creating policies to be followed. I remember when I first got on, I put a policy on, and finding out it wasn't being followed infuriated me, and it was the prior administration, but I was really upset. We put a lot of hard work, I had mounds of research paper to put the policy together. Then to find out it's being poo-pooed out there by staff really aggravated me. So I can understand the Mr. Leahy's sense of being very upset. I'm upset, too. I guess I'm tired of just hearing, we go through a policy, create policies, procedures, put them in place, and I don't know if it's the fear out there that, geez, I might get in trouble if I don't do something. I think it's the exact opposite. I would be encouraging principals and staff to say, "There's a problem, don't hide it. Get it up the chain of command as quick as possible." I know if it was me, and this happened, I would probably drop things to get out there and talk, say, "Okay, who did you call?" Right, maybe right away. "Call the police, I will meet you there. Let's take a walk around the building. Let's look what's going on. Let's assess the situation." I think there are serious conditions where if it's not the superintendent, one of her staff members needs to be sent there, not just, "Okay." But what bothers me is they're not calling you. That bothers me. The staff is not picking up the phone to call the central office to say, "I think the superintendent needs to know this." I've said it a number of times, my biggest gripe is, as committee members, if we're the last to know, that really bothers me. If I go to the soccer field and some parent says, "Did you know?" I can tell you, eight out of 10 times, I don't know, and I hear it for the first time. And they look at us to say, "Well, geez, you're on the school committee, you should know that." But I know it. So obviously, it's gotten better, I think it has, but there's a communication gap, there's a breakdown, it's not getting to the central office. So I have to sit here and say, if we have policies, they're there for a reason. And I think like Mr. Leahy said, some of these we've worked recently on, worked hard on. I know if it was me, I'd talk to my staff, "These are important, I need to know, and you have to hold them accountable as we're gonna hold you accountable." I can't go down to the principal level and say anything to the principal, "He's not my hire, he's not my support." You are. And I have to say that we've been saying this for a number of years, and luckily, and I use the word luckily, there hasn't been a crisis here. I just don't want to see that happen and have to sit here and say, "What went wrong?" We've had a lot of little incidents lately that are of serious nature through this, and I think we need to step back and say, "Where is the breakdown occurring? Where is it? And how do we turn this ship around and push it forward in that, in that things are gonna happen in a timely manner, very quickly and efficiently?" And I think it's, I'm not sure if it's the fear the principal's afraid of telling the administration. I'd be the opposite. "You better tell me, because I'd be more handily if you didn't tell me, and I'm finding out." I know I'd be upset, so I don't know how clearly to say it, but the message has to get out there. And it's not the fear of being disciplined, I think it's the fear if you don't tell me, that's the discipline's gonna come down. I think, you know, we're here to help the children, I have children in the school system, we all want them safe, we turn them over to the school by stepping on the bus or putting them in the building, we want to get them back that way. I know there's no pure school system, as we've seen recently, that's safe is safe, you can never get it that safe, but geez, if there was ever a potential danger issue, and we just said, "Well, we can deal with that tomorrow," that's unacceptable. That is totally unacceptable. And I have to tell you, I'd be horrified if this, I heard about bullets in the school, secondhand, thirdhand, and I'm a parent, and there's no newsletter, there's no letter going home that day, "We found this, these are the steps we're taking." What can be more important than addressing that situation? I would like to ask that question to them. What was more important than when you found this out, that a phone call, or this, or that? I think we have to go into that crisis mode at that point and say, "Excuse me, that call can wait, I need to address this, I need to get the action plan moving forward." Whether we went through and had a card that says, "You need to call this person, contact this person, document this, you know, get the children safely put in rooms until we find out what the situation is," that's the steps that should have taken place. And to that person, maybe the bullets aren't a big deal, because they're not in a gun, but there could have been a gun in the building, we don't know that. And I use the same analogy on other things, you know? I don't want to would've, could've it to death, but we have to take these serious, we have to follow the procedures that are put in place, or follow the policy, and by all, but at least, they need to contact the superintendent's office. And if you're not there, there are other people that can step in and handle this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy?
Okay. Thank you. Just the other point that I did, if I didn't, I bring it up, that Mr. McHugh did, is the letters need to go home that day when we find out something's wrong. We had an incident last year at one of our schools, and then with this incident, someone should be typing up a short blurb to send home with the kids that day, explaining what happened, what we're doing about it, and to ensure the parents, so that when their son or daughter gets home in the fifth grade, or fourth grade or third grade, doesn't explain it to the parent that something happened at the school, and then they're calling the school, and then they say, "Well, Monday, we'll get a letter out." That's, that's unacceptable. We've gotta get these letters out the day something happens. And most schools do that, but we've had two schools now, last year and this year, that have not done that, and that needs to be corrected.
Okay. Madam Superintendent?
I couldn't agree with the committee more that safety has to be the number one priority. We're reviewing all of the procedures and processes in place. The meeting that we had on Tuesday with Sergeant Crowley, also involved Deputy Lavalley, to review all of the expectations around notification of police, and also began the review process of notification processes within the system, to ensure that everyone understands their responsibilities around communication internally within the system, as well as externally with families. So that I couldn't agree with you more. This is serious, it demands a top-to-bottom review of procedures and processes. We really, we cannot tolerate this.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McHugh?
Just one last thing, and maybe you can check this. I would certainly hope that a policy manual exists and is sitting in the principal's office of every school. If there isn't a procedure, that's a crisis, or there's a question about a school committee policy, that's where I would go first. How do I handle this situation? Not everything's gonna be a crisis, but there's gonna be a question about fundraising. You know, that's why we had that discussion with the other thing. Go to the fundraising policy. What does it say? Are we following the guidelines? Because that's when people say, "Well, that sounds okay." That's when the trouble starts. And I don't think people intend to do things to get themselves in trouble. But I would just, I know we have a lot of new principals, and they may not, it might be there, they may not even know where it is. I just would want to ensure, and I know you have periodic meetings, and I think that as part of that, a highlight of what are the important ones that they look at and be used as a reference tool. It's an important tool, it's a big, thick book, we all know. It's an important tool, it's a big, thick book, we all know it, but it's there for a reason. It's not there just to, when you feel like looking at it, to look at it. So I would encourage, as part of this, take it to that next level too. Thank you.
Okay. We have a, I think, a motion on the floor concerning the arrest policy, move to approve by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. Roll call, please.
What is this now?
On the arrest.
The arrest policy?
Second, Ms. McHugh Fattacante, okay. Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mia Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. A motion to accept the subcommittee report as a report of progress by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the subcommittee report is approved. Next subcommittee report, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin.
I'm sorry to return to this, but I just want to be clear on the motion. I know that several of my colleagues spoke on it, but just to be clear in my initial intentions in creating these, the safety summits or forums, whatever we want to call them, what I'm envisioning would be something happening based on school level, looking at perhaps two or three elementary schools within a zone, who should have an opportunity to talk amongst themselves, to be able to have one of those schools host one of these summits, be able to have the appropriate levels of administration. I would include Central in that, but most specifically, we need to ensure that we have our principals there, our assistant principals, the disciplinary, discipline officers. I would also want to see included, whenever possible, the safety subcommittee representatives, whether it be the chair or other members, and have our school safety officers, and also the fire department included in this, so that we could have all the individuals, not only talking, you know, certainly talking with the public, being able to field those important questions, but more importantly, I think, being able to get from the parents, community members, information on concerns at the front line. Also being able to give all those important contributors to our school's safety, an opportunity to discuss amongst themselves what these issues are, and to come up with very real-world-based solutions, whether it be within those conversations, or to start those conversations and getting information and concerns from the public, and being able to turn those into policies. So just, you know, as we move forward, I would like to see clarification from the administration as to how these summits will be structured, so that we can ensure that they really are going to be accomplishing a real-world goal for both the personnel and the safety subcommittees. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor of the motion to accept the subcommittee report, say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next subcommittee report is the Lowell High School Subcommittee Report and Approval in the minutes of September 25, 2006. Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, the Lowell High School Subcommittee met on September 26, 25. Present were myself, Ms. Fattacante, Mr. Leary, Mr. Leahy, and from Central Office, superintendent was there, Jean Franco, interim deputy superintendent from the high school, Headmaster Samaras was there, Dr. Wendy Jack, Fred Abacy, the Adult Education Director, Susan Smith, Lowell Public Schools District Support Specialist, and Jack Pennard, who's the TV studio coordinator. We had about nine items on the agenda. I am going to try to go through them quickly for you. The first item was, we talked about student scheduling. My experience with the high schools is that, over the years, it seems like the scheduling of students has gotten, been getting better, that we start school with more and more students having their full schedule. So that wasn't the case this fall. In fact, there were hundreds of students who started schools without their schedules in place for several weeks. And so we kind of, the subcommittee went over what some of the reasons were for that. It seemed like the majority of the problems had to do with the new database system and being able to customize it to meet the very complex scheduling needs at the high school. Specifically, effective support and supervision of guidance councils, clerks, schedulers, and others were also noted as being key with staff's unfamiliarity with the new software. So we were looking for reassurance that scheduling problems would not reoccur to this level, and we did get some of that, but at the same time, as of September 25, we were not able to get an absolute number in terms of how many students are still struggling with not having complete schedules, although we were assured it wasn't nearly as many. So we'll be looking for more information on that. Second agenda item was the academy planning issue, where we looked at a report that talked about the 10 academies we currently have in place at the high school. And one of the things that came out was that the range in student participation varied quite a bit, from one academy, the Engineering Academy, that has only four students, to the Fine Arts Academy that has 164 students. So there was some discussion about how the high school is going to move forward with this idea of smaller learning communities, which I think we all agree is a good thing for students, but also in a way that gives students flexibility, so that they don't feel locked into having to choose an academy, and what if none of these particular academies interest you, and really looking at how to expand some academies. Like one academy that came up that we knew we were going to be looking at was the Communications Academy, and I guess I'll get to that when we get to that part of the agenda. Oh, I guess we did talk about that, I'm sorry, under academies. The Communications Academy currently has about 36 students. The staff there is completely, I don't know what the word, they're just overwhelmed with the amount of work in terms of teaching production classes and doing productions. Because as you know, Lowell Educational TV is, you know, often called on to do events throughout this district. So there was a motion, can I bring the motion up in order? Okay.
Sure.
There was a motion in regards to this by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leary, to recommend to the committee as a whole, to direct the superintendent to explore the feasibility of establishing a television production club. The thinking behind this was, we could involve more students who perhaps can't be active members of the Communications Academy, but have an interest in television production, get them involved as an after-school activity, where we would have a, you know, an advisor, faculty advisor, who'd receive whatever stipend they give club advisors, and it would be a way to get more students involved in the academy, and also have more student power to do more productions. So that was the thinking behind just having a look at if that was feasible. So I would entertain.
So that's a motion to, for the committee as a whole, to adopt the recommendation of the subcommittee to explore the possibility of establishing a television production club. So moved by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, that motion's approved.
Aye, okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda had to do with the alternative diploma program that's currently being developed in collaboration with Lowell High School, UTEC, and the Adult Education Department, under the guidance of Mr. Abacy. At that time, the subcommittee got more information about the plans for the high school, this alternative diploma program. We had two specific things we wanted more information on. One was internships, that students in this diploma program will be having field experiences on what they're calling Field Work Friday, and we wanted more information about what those opportunities might be. The second area was specific social, civic, and job readiness programs that are going to be developed through this diploma program, and how they would relate to credits and coursework. So the direct motion from that was by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leary, to recommend the committee as a whole, pending receipt of the additional information cited above, within 30 days, that the committee authorize the superintendent to begin the alternative diploma program in January 2007 as a pilot program. So they wanted the go-ahead, that once we have this additional information, that they could begin the plans to start this program in January.
Okay, so that, we probably need a roll call on that.
Okay.
Okay. So, so moved by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Fattacante. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh. Absent. Mia Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Okay.
Okay, the next agenda item was talking about the freshman reading program, where Dr. Jack presented a report on the number of freshmen who are in this new remedial reading course, the 180 program that we've just invested in. Currently, there are 210 students who are in the reading instruction program. They have enough space for an additional 40 students, which have not, I guess, been put into the program yet. There was some concern about the remaining students at the freshman academy who've been identified as needing reading support, but could not be accommodated by the Read 180 program at this time, and Dr. Jack responded with that they're making efforts to do that linking with the sophomore English classes and the freshman, and other training that's happening for other freshman teachers to be more aware of how to assist students if they're having difficulty with reading. So we, that was, while we talked about with that. The next one had to do with the freshman lunch program. Oh, sure.
Ms. Martin.
What was the question?
I have a question on the freshman reading program.
Oh, I think we could do it on each topic, if you're okay with that.
Please. Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question. So am I understanding then that we have a number of sophomores who require this Read 180 program in addition to an overwhelming number of freshmen who need this program? Am I understanding that correctly?
Actually, I would, I'll answer what I think, and if the superintendent wants to add, I'd be open to that. My understanding was she was saying, the freshmen who aren't in the Read 180 program will be getting support through the other teachers at the freshman academy, but then when they become sophomores, there's going to be a linking. So, I mean, it's not a great answer, but perhaps I'm not understanding it correctly, so I would defer to the superintendent on that.
The plan that we outlined last spring in the budget process was that we were seeking an investment in resources of both technology and materials and staffing to have the freshman program that would serve up to 250 freshmen, and then we would use the experience from this year to inform the plan for sophomores, because we know that we will, we expect that we will continue to have some sophomores who will need additional reading support. And we were going to use what we learned this year from how the freshman students, a much larger number of freshman students respond to this particular program and approach, to inform the decision about the particular materials and the approach to use next year. And what also, when we have more results of, more information about how effective the ninth-grade program is, we can more accurately predict the number of sophomores who might continue to, might need remedial reading support.
Mr. Leary.
Just real quick, we're going to break these up, because this meeting was one of the very lengthy meeting. The Read 180 program, I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chairman, there was 145 freshmen, is that an accurate number, Madam Superintendent, who were not in the Read 180 program, that needed to have assistance that were freshmen currently? Is that a correct statement?
That was my understanding from Dr. Jack.
Okay, and what we asked of Dr. Jack, and this might be coming up right at the end of this information regarding Read 180, she was trying to explain to us that certain number of that 145 may be in special ed, or may be in alternative programs already. She didn't have the information at that particular meeting. That's correct?
Yes, and I believe you asked for additional information.
Okay.
From her.
In addition to that, she did say there was a certain number, because what we're focused on is, do we have to add more resources to 180? So we asked the number, how many? And the number came back, 145. Certain number in the 145 had specific targets or actions that were being addressed. We say, were all the 145 actually covered? The answer was no. We asked for that specific number, how many weren't covered, so we can make a decision whether or not we're going to, you know, augment the, or enhance the Read 180. So I guess, and it might come up, and we may have a motion at the end of this dialogue regarding that. I guess the question is, do we have that information now? Do we know how many students are not being addressed that are reading below the freshman grade level as we speak today?
I do not have that information.
Okay. I think that's important to get, because I think, for one, I know Committeeman Leahy has been, has been like dogmatic regarding this issue, that we need to make sure we have a program for the students that are not reading at that freshman grade level. Because they're not going to pass the MCAS if they're not reading. A statement was made, and I don't know by whom in that subcommittee, it wasn't a committee member, it was one of the folks there, that at least they're in a class. Cool. They're not understanding anything that's going on in that particular class, so we need to ensure that they're being educated so they can learn that particular class. That statement was just befuddling. I couldn't even make up an adjective to describe that statement. And there's, this whole meeting was very frustrating, and I'm glad we're doing it bit by bit, because I have never been in a more frustrating meeting, and under any circumstances, in my 39.175 years on planet Earth. So I guess if there's a motion here that's we're going to make regarding getting that number and making sure we follow up with that, I think that's important.
Well, I just wanted to let you know, we are currently scheduling another Lowell High School Subcommittee meeting. I'm sure you've been polled about dates, right?
Yeah, I've heard of a date, yeah. I'm waiting.
And on that agenda is a Read 180 update, because clearly, we didn't get enough information on that, and other topics as well. And please, I want to, I am rushing through this, so if you have anything you want to add, if any of my colleagues want to jump in, I'm trying to just go over the skeleton of what we discussed, because I think we were there till 11 o'clock at night, but I'm open to discussion about it, but we are going to be getting more information about the Read 180 students, not only the ones who are currently left out, which is where there's been a lot of focus, but the 40 that weren't placed yet. I'm still not really even understanding why, if they had these students identified when they were eighth graders, why on September 25, they had 40 slots? So I think there's a lot more information and actual specific details that we need to get from the high school, but I...
Okay. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. My comments on this would be that I agree, it was a long meeting, it was frustrating. And I agree, last year, we did, we identified 400 students. Now, they said they're going to get this information for the next meeting, so that's going to be another two weeks. We're already a month in, we're already, what, six weeks into school year? I've been working on this since last year, so I'm almost up to two years on this. If we're going to make any motion tonight, I would ask my colleagues that we make a motion to hire another reading teacher for the high school and get these kids. I don't understand why it takes a week to identify the last 150 kids that can't read. We know where they are, we know who they are. If some are in, some have IEPs and in special ed, then that's great, they're getting some help. But it's, again, this is very aggravating that we can't, six weeks into this year, you know, who's helping these kids? If we're not helping them, they're not getting the help at home. My colleague, Ms. Fattacante, brought up some interesting numbers on another subcommittee. You know, why do we have 100, or whatever the number was? It jumps from 60 to 50 to 100 and something at freshman year. These kids are not getting the help, and that's when they drop out. Sophomore year, it went back down to 21, and then it increased up to senior year, but it's, well, I know. And the freshman academy is a, we're moving in the right direction, but there's still 150 kids. We don't know where they are, if they're getting reading help. I mean, it's a great improvement from last year. We went from 60 kids to 100, to 210. That's great, and I knew, and I know it costs us money, but we're not doing our jobs if we're forgetting about the other 150. So, you know, I don't know if anybody, if we want to make a motion tonight, or we want to wait for the subcommittee, but been waiting almost two years for this, and now we're waiting another month and a half into the first of this school year.
Ms. Dougherty.
Your Honor, I have to address this concern by my colleague. I think, I look at this as, this is the first time that I've been aware of, that we have actually made a concerted effort. We have focused on these children and what their needs are, and we have developed a plan to provide them with the service. That it's taken us this long, I don't know what to say to that, because I believe that three years ago, the freshman students had a percentage of kids who weren't reading. a percentage of kids who weren't reading. And 10 years ago, the freshman class, and we're looking at it, and we're saying, we've got to get these kids the help they need. And we're getting down to the K to eight piece, which obviously, it needs to be taken care of there first. But when we start talking about just hiring another teacher or throwing more money at technology, as was said earlier tonight, I have to go back to the point, and you know me, I'm a big advocate for the resources to do the job, but if I don't feel like the system is in place to efficiently use that funding, I am not going to throw more money at it. And I have not been satisfied. I don't have a problem with the Read 180 in itself. I think it's probably a good program, but the way it's been implemented, as you mentioned, six weeks into the semester, these students were identified last spring. I'm just going to, okay, let's throw another teacher at the program, let's see how they're going to organize what they've got. And I don't get a clear sense that we're doing the best job at that right now. And I feel, and it was, I had the same frustration with the new data program. Did we actually carefully plan out how we were going to implement this data system and how we were going to transition this data? I don't know. That's why I asked for that report. I don't know that we're doing everything we should be doing with this Read 180 program. And I am definitely concerned about those kids whose needs are not being met. But we have to look at this. This is the first time we're actually doing it. Let's get it right before we start throwing more money into it. And so I would say, I would just add, first of all, we don't have the money anyway. We went through this difficult budget thing, you know, months ago, but I think we need to look very carefully at how this program is being implemented and keep pushing back at the high school to give us the data, give us the numbers. And like I said, we've got another meeting set up, and I think that we need to go forward asking for the information we need before we can start, start talking about putting money into it.
Mr. Leary had his hand up first. Okay. Ms. Martin.
My only recommendation would be that there's nothing in this report for us even to react to. The, you know, we do a great deal of our work in subcommittee, and I think that that's, it's true across our subcommittees. And thank goodness for it, because otherwise, these meetings are evening meetings would be, you know, would just be unwieldy. I think the real critical issue, though, is that if this is, if we do our work in subcommittee, then we need to do our work. And looking at this, this meeting, and it's not, I'm not pointing at the, the actual high school subcommittee, what I'm looking at is that we're not getting the information from the high school to make reasonable decisions. You know, I hear the frustration from my colleagues. I got to tell you, I feel the absolute same frustration when we're talking about a program. We talk about it in subcommittee, then new information comes up here, and then we're referred back to subcommittee. It's this never-ending cycle. And I think that if we really are going to make sure that the work we're doing is based on fact and based on what's really happening, in this specific case, at the high school, then we need to have that information from the high school, and it's incumbent upon the administration to make sure that we get that. You know, there is nothing that I'm looking at in this report, and again, you know, I wasn't at this meeting, and I apologize for that, you know, not being a member of that subcommittee, but there is nothing in this, in this subcommittee report for us to react to, for us to even do anything about. And that's upsetting. And I think that's what leads to this kind of, you know, again, this increasing frustration across the board that we're constantly getting our information piecemeal, that we're not getting actual hardcore data. I've heard 25 different numbers rattled out in terms of just this one issue. 40 students, 145 students, 60, I mean, there's just, you know, if we're expected to make these, these decisions, we need hardcore numbers that are cemented that we can react to. And I think that that, you know, as a, you know, I can say for the subcommittees that I chair, I will be moving in that direction, that there will not be meetings where we simply discuss an issue and issue a report of progress, that to steal a term of art from my colleague, Mr. Leary, you know, there will be action items, that if we're, we're not meeting to hear ourselves talk. We don't do that here on Wednesday nights, and we can't do it at our subcommittees either. So I think that we all need to focus on that more, so that there's actual substance for us to react to and, you know, be able to have a discussion on, to actually bring things to resolution. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Leary.
Thank you. I just appreciate what Committeewoman Martin just stated. I mean, it's just, in the answer, Committeeperson Leahy, I'd like to make a motion to add another teacher right now. We don't know the specific numbers. So the numbers that were without the 180 program were 145. Of that, there was three different categories. One, people, students who are not in any category. Two, students who are in other categories, we didn't know what they were. And three, they were in special ed. So I guess what I really, I mean, I, we really can't say, let's hire another teacher. Maybe we need two teachers. I, you know, that's the kind of the most challenging part. The information contained at that meeting, not only within the report, didn't provide us a solution. So, and in fairness, we've had a discussion offline regarding, Madam Superintendent, and I think you're in agreement with me, if you're not, please tell me that you're not, that basically, that meeting had very little value, other than the UTL piece, which was very informative, and they had an action plan, we made some suggestions, and they're going to carry them out. There were solutions. We could review different types of solutions. We need to make sure we're in these subcommittees that not only they bring us to us problems, but potential solutions, and then review exactly what we're asking for. I know we asked for, I know everybody, I think everybody in that committee asked specifically for the breakout of that 145 data. We'll get that in the next subcommittee meeting. I think what we need to do on our end is, once we have that data, is say, okay, we need another teacher for that, let's get that teacher. Either we hire somebody, we take someone from another area and put them in that position, but we can't afford to continue with certain amount of people who are reading two grades level below freshman academy. And just quickly, you know, we're nailing the high school right here for that particular subcommittee. There is all these students, over 400 students who came through K through eight, who are reading two grades below. And lastly, the 180, 180 program, Read 180, has shown to have results when it's being effectively used. The folks at the freshman academy last year, correct me, Madam Superintendent, actually showed dramatic success with the small pool of folks they used last year. So the program 180 is something that will be successful. It's a question of getting it to the folk, the students that need it.
Madam Superintendent.
If I could just offer two comments. One, when the, when this was brought as a budget proposal last spring, we identified that we, that we proposed a budget that had the capacity at maximum to meet the needs of 200 to 280 youngsters in the program. We knew that was not the total number of students who had the need, but that was what the budget, two things, that that's what the budget could absorb, given all the competing needs that we struggled with last spring. And the second was that we, that we thought that it is challenging to implement, this is a complicated reading program. It's not a matter of putting a book in front of youngsters or, you know, flicking on a computer. It's a complex program. We believed we had the capacity, if we're hiring early, that we could get two, we could have, make sure that we had two strong reading teachers, the academic chair for English teaching one of the courses, a special educator teaching a course, and that we could build among, among the teachers, a good understanding of the program and work with the program and, and meet the needs of a lot of youngsters, not all of them, but a lot of them, and learn from that, and then be able to develop a thoughtful plan for year two. So I just want to remind us of that conversation back in the, in the spring, that that was, that was the plan.
Mr. Leary.
Just to go over, yeah, we did budget 200. We also had ongoing dialogue in the subcommittees, and Committeeperson Leahy, as I said earlier, was dogmatic regarding, I wanted to hire another teacher. And we kept having dialogue about, once we see how the program's set up, which all the 200 aren't quite running effectively either at this point, we had made plans to think about putting another teacher in place at some point during the school year. So, yeah, at the budget time, because we were limited finances, we did say, we're only going to hire, buy that much of the program and have that many resources to allocate to it. But we also were planning a, have an action plan to address it in the middle of the school year, once we knew how the program was set up and how it was run. So in fairness, it's not just the budget choice we made last year. We are also making plans, I guess, Committeeman Leahy could actually talk more about it. We had dialogue regarding, what are we going to do about the other 145? So that wasn't something we simply just dropped in the budget time, in all fairness.
Mr. Leahy.
Sure. We had lots of discussions, but I don't think we passed the budget until late June, and we did talk about this again. And, you know, speaking for myself only, when we discussed many things here, but the main thing that everybody focuses on is that we're in the education business. And if we're setting aside money for raises, and we have 150 kids that cannot read, then we're doing the wrong thing. And that's what the problem is. We're so concerned right now with negotiations, we've got to set money aside, that in my opinion, I'd gladly take whatever we need money out of this and put it towards getting these kids to read, because if these kids go, go on and graduate, I appreciate that I cannot sit there during the UTL meetings, but I can sit there through the other meetings. And I just think, I'm not saying, I'm not criticizing anybody, I'm just saying, in my judgment, I'm not giving out any raises until we do what we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be educating the kids, we're supposed to have the resources, the computers, the books, everything. And every year, we sit here and say, we don't have enough money for this, we don't have enough money for that, but we have enough money to give out raises all the time. And maybe that's what we need to do, is stop and say, no, and send a letter to the paper and say, this is where everything's going. That's why we don't have money, but this is what we need to work on. And I'm not criticizing anybody. I know you guys sit through long hours with certain unions that I can't sit in on, but there's other unions that I sit in on, and this is what needs to happen.
Okay. Ms. Doherty, continue.
Thank you. The next item we talked about was freshman library access. And what we were told is that freshman students are not allowed to go over to the, the library during the school day, that they'll be taken by classes, English classes, and during the freshman seminar courses. The library is, however, open 30 minutes before school and 60 minutes after school, which they can go during that time and on Saturday mornings. So that was left at that point. I don't know if there's any questions or comments about freshman access?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. McHugh.
Thank you. Just briefly, I see as a step in the right direction. I don't see as a solution. I think you just said it's open 30 minutes prior to school, so based on the location of the library in the freshman academy, it takes, what, about 10 minutes to walk over, probably the time, yeah? So I guess the question would be back, how much research can you get done in probably about 20 minutes? Time you get on, is open a book, get to a book, you know, open a computer, get on it, do some research, and afterwards, for one hour. It's not a lot of time. I, hopefully, you'll continue to look at this, but I would like to see some type of way to get the children over during the day, whether it's an independent study, or whether it's a pass or something. You know, I mean, not, you know, we have some very good students that need to be over there utilizing those resources. The other option I was hoping you would look at would be a option to have some resources in that building, whether it's, and maybe that's going to be the solution, so maybe I'm missing that, but...
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. It's not here in the minutes I have in front of me. They are starting a small library at the freshman academy. They've bought a bunch of books. I think it's more geared towards reading than research, though, because they're really focusing on freshmen always having a book going, that kind of thing. So they invested in a lot of paperback books of contemporary stuff that would interest the freshmen, so they would have the availability of borrowing right at the freshman academy. So they have started this small library. And as I mentioned, they're bringing them over by class, but certainly, we could, we are going to be meeting again to look at the idea of a pass program, that groups of students could go over with permission from a teacher to do specific research projects. I would be open to...
Thank you. I think that's, that's how this came in front of me, a child that needed to do some research for a project was not allowed to go over, as an individual or with another person or a small group or something. I mean, I know that they're still young adults, but at some point, we have to allow the supervision within the library that we, you know, validate that they get there and everything else. But I think we've got to look at this, that we're asking them to do projects, and I know that some of it's homework, but there is times when they should say, well, I'm sorry, I can't walk you over, so you can't go. I mean, I don't think that's the right reason. You can just keep busy in class and do some of your other homework. So that was the intention. So I, I thank you for looking into it. I think we're not quite there at the end.
Yeah, I, actually, I have to reiterate my colleague's words about the meeting. It was a frustrating meeting. We also talked about the freshman lunch program, which was frustrating for me personally, because they, although I have good news, the tables are here now, and they will be set up on Saturday, but as of 9:25, they didn't have tables. Those kids are still eating at these little, like, elementary tables with the little stools. And, you know, my, my bigger concern was that they were getting very limited choices for lunch, and what I was hearing was that it was terrible choices and very small portions. And basically, the response we got from the high school was, well, we don't have a plan. We don't have a kitchen over there, and we don't have a way to keep the food hot. And, you know, our response as a subcommittee was, you know, you had all summer to look into this, why are you telling us this now? So again, we're back to pushing back to the high school. We're going to get an update, although we did get the tables, and they'll be set up Saturday. And there was some talk that they were going to be able to increase the portion size, because apparently, they were getting small portions as well. But we do have a challenge in how we're going to provide a lunch that at least is somewhat comparable to what the kids at the main campus get, because what I've been hearing is the freshmen are sneaking out, trying to get over to the main lunchroom, because they don't have adequate facilities or food choices at the freshman academy. So it is something that we're, we're going to be getting more information on. But in terms of the meeting that night, they had no plan for us.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. You know, I have to, to start with a simple question. When the, when our Pine School, when our Magnet Schools were located in the McDonough Building, there was a kitchen. I'm surprised to hear that suddenly there isn't a kitchen. I mean, did it go someplace? I mean, I don't understand how we're being presented with an argument that there's no kitchen.
Let me ask, Mr. Wang, to speak to this.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. The, the kitchen at the freshman academy is not a full-functioning kitchen. It hadn't been for quite some time. Even when the school was renovated, it wasn't a full-service kitchen. Even when the elementary and the middle school, K to eight kids were there, it was a satellite site. So the food was always cooked offsite at one of the other schools, the elementary, the middle schools, and actually shipped in, like happens now at, say, the Washington, the Moody, the Malloy, I'm sorry, the Maury, into some of those buildings. So they actually don't have the preparation area, stoves, things of that sort, at that particular kitchen to prepare meals. So what they're doing is cooking the meals in the main building and shipping them over for the freshman lunches. And I do, I can report and will be working for the, both the high school subcommittee, as well as the next regular school committee meeting, on some type of a report, just to address some of the immediate concerns. If we did have a meeting at the high school today to begin discussions on this. And I can tell you that it is being, being fully looked at.
And I appreciate that. I just think to be having a conversation in October about how we provide, you know, 900 students with lunch is inadequate, and it's an inadequate response. You know, I, recognizing that, that, again, we have lunches that are adequately and appropriately prepared across our district, and that there are only specific places where it's an issue. I think we need to focus on where those specific places are, where now lunch is an issue. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes. If we could move to an upbeat note, we also had on the agenda notification that this school year, 2006, 2007, is the 175th anniversary of the founding of Lowell High School, which is really cool.
We're still here.
It's, it was the first co-ed public high school, the first high school to graduate African-American. I mean, we, and we're still here. So the official announcement will be made at this year's Distinguished Alumni Award, which is on October 19th. So we also discussed the Lowell High School organization chart, looking at the administration, the headmasters, all that. And because it was so late, it was 10:59, and we had just gotten that chart that evening... And because it was so late, it was ten fifty-nine, and we had just gotten that chart that evening, we decided to defer discussion of the organizational chart for the next Lowell High School Subcommittee's meeting, something we could look forward to. The last item was the substitute coverage for faculty travel and conferences. As my colleagues may recall, we have a teacher who is from the high school who's traveling to France to learn about taking a group of students to Spain. And the money to pay for his substitute coverage, not the trip, I believe the trip is coming out of his own pocket, but the money for substitute coverage will be, come from the high school's general funds, not professional development. And that was really it for the high school's subcommittee report.
All right. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the motion is accepted. And I think the last subcommittee report is the personnel subcommittee report from this evening.
We had facilities.
Oh, I'm sorry, facilities, yep.
We've got two more.
Okay, facilities first. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I'll be, go through this as quickly as I can. On the agenda, we met Monday, October second. Myself, Jackie Doherty, and Jim Leary were present. Assistant Superintendent Jay Lang, Brian Curley, Director of Operations and Maintenance. The first item on the agenda was the HVAC Phase One Study Progress Presentation. We had representatives there from RDK Engineering. They reviewed with the committee their ongoing report of all our heating systems on all the schools. And hopefully, by the end of October, early November, they'll have the full report. And basically, what they're going to do is let us, basically, what the report will tell us is what condition our units are in, and which ones need updating, replacement, or just general maintenance work. And it'll give us a good handle on where we stand. Motion by Jackie Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leary, to accept the report as a report of progress. The second item was the five-year capital plan. Mr. Lang reviewed that with us. It's an ongoing report. He just wanted to get some feedback on it. Mr. Lang will also be identifying funding sources for this capital plan, capital plan. And that should be, that should be ready for review about the middle of November for us. Motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leary, to accept it as a report of progress. Third report was on the status of the elevators. Mr. Lang and Mr. Curley updated the committee members on the current status of the elevator upgrades and repairs being performed at various schools throughout the city. We each have a chart that shows us which elevators are completed, which ones are going to be completed by the end of the week, and there were a couple in there that are still waiting for parts, so we should have all the elevators up and running very shortly. Ms. Doherty made the motion, seconded by Mr. Leary, to accept this as a report of progress. The fourth item that we spoke about was the work order system. Mr. Lang and Mr. Curley discussed the work order, the work that has taken place with regard to automating the work order ticketing system that is being used by the school department and the city department, the public works, to track the maintenance requests in our schools. It's very positive. Mr. Curley seems to have a good handle on this, and hopefully, by the, by the end of the month, around November first, we'll have, we'll be able to implement this system. I think if we need to vote on it, do we need to? No. So hopefully, by November first, we'll have this up and running. Motion was made by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Doherty, to accept this as a report of progress. The fifth item was the use of facilities policy. We had a number of recommended amendments. Mr. Lang discussed with the members present, excuse me, Mr. Lang discussed with the members present work that has been undertaken on the automatic, to automate, excuse me, the use of the facilities application process. So we needed to go through, make a few adjustments. We had to make sure that our costs were being covered. And Mr. Lang recommended that Section F number three, on the current regulations governing the use of school facilities, be removed from the policy. Additional changes to Section J number six have been recommended to allow the following, to allow the school department to fully utilize the facility scheduling and permitting software to calculate the invoices for the users. So this was, this will clear up a lot of, this will hopefully make our facilities policy a lot clearer to everybody. So the motion was made by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leary, to accept the reporters, the report of progress, and to recommend to the full school committee the recommended actions and amendments to the regulations governing the use of school facilities. And that was approved three to zero. So do we want to vote on that now?
Yes, I think that's appropriate, but what's being deleted, the Section F number three? Do you know what that is? Or, Mr. Lang?
Did you go over that?
Oh, it's attached, okay.
It's attached in there, but if you want to...
All right, so we just vote to adopt the new policy as proposed? Okay, so motion to approve the policy as proposed by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Present. Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatikante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Six yeas, one present, approved.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda was the Family Literacy Center lease. The current lease for the Family Literacy Center, located at twenty-six Palmer Street, expires October thirty-first. The Family Literacy Center houses the early childhood development of the Lowell Public Schools. The lease for the space is funded by the Community Partnership for Children Grant. A new request for the proposals has been issued for the three-year lease of the space for the Family Literacy Center. Proposal due this Friday, the thirteenth. Mr. Lang anticipates recommending that the school committee enter into a contract for the lease at the October eighteenth meeting. Mr. Lang also informed the committee members that were present that the grant funding that pays for this lease has been awarded for the current fiscal year, ending June thirtieth, two oh seven. To best safeguard the interests of Lowell Public Schools, the lease has been advertised with a subject-to-annual appropriation clause. That will allow the school department to terminate the lease if grant funding is not awarded, because the, apparently, the funding, grant fund for this is questionable. So the motion was made by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Doherty, to accept this as a report of progress. The seventh item on the agenda, we only have three more to go, were the telephone lines in the school buildings. Mr. Lang reviewed a report provided by Mr. Cassidy detailing the number of telephone lines into our school buildings. This was a question that I had asked of Mr. Lang, because some of our schools, the older ones, the Washington, maybe the Riley, have a number of telephone lines going into schools, but they're not connected. So if someone wants to call the main number, it necessarily doesn't jump to the next phone available that might be in the principal's office or vice principal. So it's clearly needs to be updated. Almost a safety issue that we need to work on, because when people call the schools, they just get a busy line. So hopefully, tomorrow, we'll have an answer. I'm just, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have some answers for the worst schools, and we can update some of the lines to get us through until we can fully change the whole phone system in schools that need it. So this motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leary, to accept it as a report of progress. The eighth, the next item on the agenda was appearance of school buildings and grounds. Mr. Curley discussed with the committee members presence, present the cleanliness of the interior and exterior of the facilities. Over last year and this year, an increased emphasis has been placed, and will be placed, on the exterior cleanliness and general presentation of our school buildings. So that will include a few barrels in front of the schools, making sure that we're just out front, and we're picking up the trash on a daily basis, and during the spring and summer, that we're trimming and cutting the grass on time. The last item on the agenda was a personnel update, custodial staff. Mr. Curley discussed the various staffing issues among the custodial staff in the district, including employees currently out of work on, due to workman's comp, extended sickness, retirement, resignation, and family medical leave act. So the school department will be hiring. We discussed about the school department hiring provisional custodial staff for fill-in for the custodial staff currently out of work due to the above reasons. So we clearly see this as a problem. We know that the schools are understaffed, and then when we have so many people out, we need to be able to get people in there to fill these positions. So there was a motion made by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Doherty, to accept that as a report of progress. And I don't know, did we need anything else on that? No? Okay.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Could I just ask, there are no contractual implications of that in terms of hiring provisional staff? I know that we have, we had pay differentials in place in the, as I'm recalling, pay differentials in place for when there was a man out. Is that not the case, and can we do that without negotiating it, I guess, is my question?
Maybe Mr. Lang could answer that?
Okay. Mr. Lang?
The Rodney contractual, these are more long-term leaves, and the contract actually specifies that we'll try to replace leaves as quickly as possible, when we know an employee's going to be out for an extended period of time. So the, like, the man-out clause in the custodial contract would, contractually, actually be in effect, say, like, for a day or two, because it really is just kind of a stop-gap measure until someone came back to work, say, from a flu-type thing. These, the people that we were actually talking about and addressed at the subcommittee meeting, we know are out for months at a time. And just the two-hour man-out provision of the contract really wouldn't cover for the proper building cleanliness and attention that's needed. So the, one of the, one of the issues that we talked about and we've been working through is some of our issues with civil service, as far as actually getting a number of respondents for the different jobs that we have. We're going to try to work with both the union and civil service to try to figure out different ways to speed up the process of getting people on staff, and just explore and keep open all of our options as far as being able to hire people to fill those long-term gaps that don't conflict with the, with the collective bargaining agreement.
Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the report is accepted. Last subcommittee report is the Personnel Subcommittee Report on the meeting earlier this evening. I believe that's Ms. Martin.
Yes, thank you very much. The Personnel Subcommittee did just meet prior to this evening's meeting. We will have a written report at our next meeting, but just to give a verbal report, basically, the, we did discuss the recent meeting that happened, the recent quarry review meeting that happened with our state delegation at the request of this committee, the school committee, which was very much appreciated, that we did bring in the, the executive director of the quarry board, came to discuss the process with us, did agree during this meeting to, basically, to institute an audit of our specific situation, to ensure that we can have faith in our quarry, our quarry board reports. I think that it was extremely helpful, in that it will help inform us as we really review our entire background check policy, also the promotions policy, so that we can ensure that the policies we have in place are the most strident in the Commonwealth, so that we can ensure that we do have the absolute Cadillac of background check policies for our district, for our staff, and for our students. I think it's the, you know, it's a policy process that has begun, obviously, in a very challenging environment, and I think that the administration certainly is going to great lengths to respond to the very real and critical concerns that this committee has brought up. I know I've said it before, I don't like to create policy in reaction to a specific situation, but this situation has prompted a very, I think, comprehensive review of all of our hiring policies, and that's something that, in the end, will benefit our district, regardless of the negative way in which it was begun. So it is part of what was presented to the Personnel and Safety Subcommittees this evening, was several drafts of some information for the subcommittees to review. I wouldn't, I wouldn't offer any opinions on it at this point, because it was just given to us this evening, so we haven't had any time to review it in any detail, and we all recognize that we require that if we're going to make thoughtful, considerate decisions on this. So we will be polling the subcommittee members to bring us all together again, to review these draft proposals, make the, make our necessary improvements to them and suggestions for them, so that we can begin to put in place these policies. I think that, again, I think it's going to be necessary for us to put in place, in addition to the policies themselves, but also the, a system so that we already can have in place what the consequences will be should things not be implemented appropriately. And I think the onus of that needs to fall on the committee, that as we do put in place policies as we move forward, that we anticipate what, what the consequences need to be should things not be implemented appropriately. So I think that that's, you know, for, again, as Chair of the Personnel Subcommittee, I can say that, I know in working with my fellow chair of the Safety Subcommittee, that that's something that we'll be implementing as we move forward, that we presuppose and anticipate what our, what the needs will be should our policies not be met appropriately or implemented appropriately. So those will be put in place as part of this entire process. Again, it was a working subcommittee, I apologize, that we don't have anything specific to respond to, having just said about twenty minutes ago that that was going to be the new watchword for our subcommittees. So, sorry about that. But, next time. And, you know, again, having received a lot of information tonight, just prior to this meeting, it's hard to respond to anything officially at this point, but we will be in the next, before our next school committee meeting. And I would, again, open it up, should any of my colleagues, especially my co-chair, have anything to add.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the report is accepted. Under reports of the superintendent, the first item, tenth-grade MCAS scores for two thousand six. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. You have a report prepared on the tenth-grade MCAS results for, these are the, these are this year's juniors, who took them as, at the end of their sophomore year. And though the high school has been identified as one of many of the Lowell Public Schools that have not met the federal... Public Schools that have not met the federal AYP, adequate yearly progress target, which is an ever-increasing target, so that it's a school that's been designated as a school in need of improvement, it is heartening to see the results of the most recent MCAS tests. Lowell was one of only three cities to achieve a milestone. It's really the first time in the Commonwealth that more than, that 50% or more of the sophomores taking the MCAS for the first time earned a proficient score. And this is not a passing score, this is the proficient score. And what's, to pass and graduate, you have to get a score of 220. To earn a rating of proficiency, you have to score a 240 on a scale up to 280. And so this is, this is a significant accomplishment, and for the very first time Lowell sophomores, 51% scored that proficient or advanced rating in English Language Arts and 50% in mathematics. So it was really quite a, quite an accomplishment, putting us, putting us with only two other cities in the Commonwealth to have achieved that milestone. It's not, it's, no, no one's going to rest with that, but it's, it's nice to celebrate reaching a milestone. The improvement was significant in, in English Language Arts, for example. We went up six percentage points, which is actually a 13% improvement in the percent proficient and advanced. And in terms of the youngsters failing the test, we've really, we reduced, we cut the failing rate by fully one-third, down to 14% of the sophomores. So that means that 14, only 14% of the sophomores have failed to achieve the graduation standard in English Language Arts, which is really a major accomplishment that I think people really wondered about this was, whether this was possible five years ago. And so it's a major accomplishment. And in mathematics, where there's, where there's still more room to go, we've been able to reduce the, the failure rate to, down to 21%. So there's, so that one out of five of our sophomores is needing to take additional mathematics geared to meeting that minimum standard for graduation in mathematics. But it really is a wonderful statement, and I had an opportunity to speak to the high school faculty the day that these results were, were officially released, and I, I talked with the high school faculty, congratulating them on their hard work, and also saying that they also owe a debt of thanks to the elementary and middle school teachers who have been working very hard over the last decade to prepare students for this. But I think it's good news for Lowell.
Thank you. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, Sean, I just have to say, because I feel like I've been beating the negative drum so much lately, I was so proud of the progress we made as a district. And I want to add that it's not just proficient but advanced, the top two categories, that we were, you know, one of the top three cities in the state to show this kind of improvement over last year. And although as, we're not going to rest on that, we've got more work to do. I, I'd like to just remind my colleagues that we don't get a lot of attention for this piece because it's always wrapped in the media around the idea that there's so many failing schools, schools that haven't made, met their adequate yearly progress. AYP, I think we're at one-third of the schools in the state of Massachusetts are now not meeting their AYP. And I, I was reading an article the other day, and so I'm taking from that, and these are not my words, but the writer in the article, and I can't remember the source, but she said that it's a statist, it's a statistical impossibility that 100% of our students will be proficient or advanced by the year 2014, that the goal itself is not possible. And to constantly be beaten up, that I predict that as, if we continue with No Child Left Behind the Way It Is, that next year and the year after, that number is going to go from one-third of our schools across the state and across the country, because it's statistically impossible to have 100% students meet proficiency and above. But, you know, given that, we continue to work towards doing a better job of educating our students, meeting them where their needs are, and bringing them as high as they can go to their potential. And I think our success this year indicates how much the efforts the school department has made in terms of curriculum and instruction are paying off in student learning, and that's encouraging for all of us. I want to formally thank the superintendent, her staff, and all the teachers who work so hard every day to teach our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
In fact, just, just if I could just build on a comment of Ms. Dougherty, one of the difficulties with the way the needs improvement and adequate yearly progress is, is discussed in the media is that it's, it's rarely clearly described as an ever-increasing standard. So it, to the, to the headline reader, there's a picture of it being, that, that schools are getting worse, worse, worse. When in fact, what it means in this adequate yearly progress is that there's a very, there's an ever-increasing bar, ever-higher bar that has to be reached, and if you don't reach it, you get declared in need of improvement. And it's, it's a, it's a sophisticated concept to capture in a headline. And so if you only read the headline, you really create, it really creates the impression that schools are getting worse and worse. And in fact, the story in Massachusetts, and, and certainly in Lowell, is that youngsters' performance as measured by MCAS is steadily, steadily increasing. We're going to, we've got some preliminary results that show our math scores for grades four and eight. The increases exceeded the state average statewide. There've been some flat scores in English Language Arts, and we, we've not been able to get ourselves out of that yet. It's, it's clearly, it's a complicated story to tell, and one very difficult for the, for the media to tell, but the headlines don't help us.
Chair recognizes Mayor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I, I agree that it's sometimes a complicated story to tell, but I, I think we all get it here, and I think this is extraordinarily good news. And I, I think, in spite of what else has happened at this meeting this evening, we should be singing this from the mountaintops. I mean, I, I think that's part of our job, is to promote the excellent school system we have, and it is an excellent system in very many, many ways. And I am very proud of the achievement that's been made in Lowell. I think it's incumbent on us to, to have that noted. I do think, you know, overall, I think the MCAS process here in Massachusetts has been a good thing for school systems in Massachusetts. I think it's been a good system overall for Lowell. It's holding people accountable, and people are doing better. We're doing much better. And my, you know, we have a lot of excuses, I think, and a lot of justifiable reasons why our averages are low. We have many students whose English is not their first language, so they have challenges. We have many students in poverty, and they have special challenges. But we should have as many people with adequate means and above-average intelligence that can do well in these tests. And that's always been, you know, my focus is not so much to look at the bottom, because those are special problems, and they're always going to be near the bottom, even though they, the bottom can rise. That's not the real story. The real story is, why don't we have as many advanced and proficient students as they have elsewhere? And finally, for the first time, more than half our students are now advanced and proficient in both math and English at the high school level. That's testament to the work of those at the high school, and testament to the work of those who've prepared those students for high school. So I think it's an extraordinarily good story. I think we did get, some people were singing it from the mountaintops. The Boston Globe on September 28th, page one, their lead story, highlighted Lowell, Brockton, and Boston as the only three cities to achieve this goal. So some people are taking notice, and I think we owe it to our students and our system, our administrators, and our teachers to take notice of the, the good work they're doing and to champion that work when it happens. So I'm sorry this had to come out at quarter to 10:00 at night when probably very few people are paying attention, but I think it's, it's an incredibly positive story for the Lowell school system that we need to tell and do a better job at telling, and compliment people for jobs well done. We don't have a perfect system, that's obvious from the meeting tonight and meetings in recent weeks, and we have plenty of areas to improve. But I think we can rightly be proud of the steps that have been made and the advancements that have occurred here in a short time over the last five years. So that's, that's the measure that they, they took in the story, was five-year period. Have over 50% of our students doing advanced and proficient work is certainly something to be proud of, and everybody who's worked toward that goal deserves to be congratulated.
Thank you. It's very encouraging. Mr. Leahy, Mr. Leary?
Now, first, I want to, I don't, I want to echo what the mayor said. I want to just congratulate the headmaster and his staff and the teachers at the Lowell High for doing exceptionally great. I mean, it's fantastic. And I just have a quick question of the superintendent. I guess, really, the story about MCAS is confusing, and, and one of the schools that we always hear that is not doing well is probably one of our best middle schools, the Sullivan Middle School. And if you could just explain briefly to the public that this school is actually an exceptionally good, excellent school, and that the MCAS way they're evaluating it is, is not exactly the most proficient or accurate way of telling how a student's doing. I mean, you're competing, the benchmark for MCAS is against your own school. So while the Sullivan School is on the list, quote unquote, it's better than, you know, how many percentages throughout the school, throughout the state, how many middle schools throughout the country? And if you could just speak briefly to that, that'd be...
Well, if I could comment that the, actually, the, the MCAS scores in English Language Arts, that Sullivan approached the state average, which is really quite, you know, impressive for, for a city school. And it's, it's made significant progress in mathematics and is on its way toward reaching, reaching the state average. It's not there yet, but it's, it's improvement just, just in the, in the, in the last year in the math MCAS, made it very, very close to actually achieving its adequate yearly progress target, which is this ever-increasing target. So they came very close to achieving adequate yearly progress and getting themselves off of that, off of that list of a school in need of improvement and restructuring. So the Sullivan School, like so many of our schools, I think really deserves a lot of credit for the hard work they've done, the very careful planning, and the really deep commitment that they've made to carry out those plans to improve, to improve instruction and in turn, improve the learning of the youngsters they serve.
Mr. McHale?
Thank you. I too just want to say, I wish this was the opening report tonight. I think that would have been a timely, I mean, I have to say, I think you heard Mr. Leahy be passionate about a program early, and I think this is why. This is why we all sit here, and from a curriculum standpoint, we've made great strides, great strides. And I think you've heard, I know Superintendent, you heard through the budget, we have to sit here and make those cuts. It's, it's terrible, because this is what it's about. The resources are people, the resources are teachers. You know, if the teacher isn't there, the learnings aren't happening. So I, I have to tell you, I think, these are the good things. Like we said, we need to stand up and really tell people Lowell's a great school system. Any child can get the first-class education possible here. The pieces are in place. You know, are we perfect? No. But I think you're starting to see it, and you're starting to see the years of implementation of the elementary school, the reading program first, and then now it's the math program. So that's why the math's a little bit behind, but it's coming. I, I think, I can go back five, six years ago, and we, we talked about all these great programs we were implementing and piloting and then bringing them in the following year. I really see it, and this is what it's coming to. And I think we're going to see some more improvements as we move forward. Every child has the opportunity, I think, in this school system to pass, to get up there. They have to apply themselves. That's the key part, and I think that's always going to be our struggle. But the tools are there, the programs are there, the teachers are there, every child just has to now apply themselves, and they can make it through this. And that's the way I'm looking at this. And I think we've made some great strides. Again, I'd like to congratulate, you know, the paraprofessionals, the custodians, everybody involved. It's a team effort here. If the learning environment's a clean, safe environment, it's, it's a fun place to go. So I want to say it's really a concerted effort from the administration all the way down, all the way down to our cafeteria workers who put out great lunches. So I think that's what it's about, and that's what we have to focus on, that the students, the success of our students are showing up on a daily basis. And I've always said this, the most impressive thing, when you sit at that high school graduation and you hear where our students are going to college, you know, Harvard, MIT, Yale, you can go there. They can have that opportunity. So I think those are the success stories the, the folks out there don't always hear, but I think this is what's proved, the proof and the pointing and to show that they can make it happen. So I, I know it is so late now that most people are home sleeping and not worrying about this, but I, I do hope the, the paper does a great story in this, because this is important, that the folks at home get to really see what's happening, and there are success stories in Lowell. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Just two quick things. One was, in, in reviewing the report, there's a note here to, important to note that district scores differ from those for Lowell High School proper. I mean, as I'm looking at this, obviously, there's not a big difference, because my understanding would be in reading this, that the number of students who are, you know, who are out of district, high school out-of-district placements certainly are small. Is there something else going on here that this is meant to indicate to us that we should be paying attention to?
No, it's only to indicate that, that when, when district scores get reported, since we have just the single high school, when all of those scores are reported, it may be slightly different percentages. That's the only indication. One of the, one of the challenges we face whenever we deal with numbers is at what, at what point ti, time is the number and who's included in the number? So that's all, that was, was trying to be very precise.
Okay.
That there, there may be another number reported at some point.
Okay. But basically, as we look at the, at our, I mean, a high school, obviously, is the preponderance of our students.
That's right.
Okay. I guess really, you know, just to echo what my, my colleagues have said, and really, I think, more importantly, to thank my colleagues for saying it, because as, as a member of this committee, I, you know, certainly, we've all lived through some difficult and challenging times for these last few, last few weeks, up to a month or so. And it's great to hear that, that my colleagues, you know, retain their enthusiasm, their, their focus and excitement about what really is exciting and good in our district. And I have to say, on a very personal level, I appreciate hearing that. I can only imagine how our teachers probably feel, having a chance to hear that, hear the committee say these things and to hear this good news. But it, it is invigorating for me and for my approach to this work, and I can only imagine that our teachers and our administrators have the same reaction to that. So I thank my colleagues for reigniting that, I guess, in, in me as their fellow member, and also throughout our district, where I think it's important that we do keep our eye on the prize and keep moving forward constantly and consistently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, man, oh, motion to accept the report of the superintendent by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next item, Madam Superintendent, the Mary Bajakalupo Forum.
Yes, I just wanted to report on a first event, a first-time event made possible by the Endowment Fund for the Mary Bajakalupo Educational Forum. Mary Bajakalupo, of course, is one of the heroes of Lowell, active in, in so many ways in bridging, building bridges and supporting public education. In her honor, an annual forum is being developed. The first one will be this Saturday, October 14th, from 8:15 a.m. to noon at the new Stocklosa Middle School. The focus is on the community role in educational excellence. Promises to be an exciting program involving, involving educators, people from the business community, people from the media, and people from the university, from the community college. I know there'll be some school committee members present. It promises to be, I think, an exciting forum and potentially the opportunity to launch some, some community-wide action plans related to developing, nurturing and supporting educational excellence in the system.
Okay. Motion to accept the report by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, report is accepted. Next item, Madam Superintendent?
Just reporting on a very generous donation from Donna Truscott, who has donated a baby grand piano to the Fine Arts Department at the high school. And there's some very, very nice opportunities that now come available to our youngsters, and again, strengthening our fine arts program. So it's a wonderful example of generosity that will make a difference for a number of our, well, really for the whole high school, because they'll be the beneficiaries of, of the performances that are now possible.
Motion to accept the report by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, report is accepted. And next item is home education.
Yes, a recommendation to grant permission for home education for a youngster.
It's in there. Okay. Any questions? Roll call. Motion approved by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Okay. Is there an additional item on the small learning?
That's under, I was going to comment on that under conference request.
Okay.
Do you want me to comment now?
I think, well, we're at conference requests, so...
Okay. Yes, we've received word that Lowell High School, in partnership with Haverhill High School, has been awarded a five-year federal grant to support the work of developing the smaller learning communities at the schools. So that's support for strengthening the freshman academy, for developing the academy program at the school. We know very few details of the grant. The latest information I have, actually, is after I did this memo at 5:00, I learned from the Headmaster at 6:00, that it looks like the minimum amount of monies that we'll be receiving annually is $200,000, not the $100,000. So as we get details of that, we'll obviously give you those. The first requirement of the grant is a project director meeting in Washington, so I've added a request under convention and conference requests, so that, to authorize the Headmaster, William Samaris, or his designee, to attend this required conference in Washington, D.C. October 16th and 17th, which is before our next School Committee meeting, which explains the last-minute presentation.
Okay. So that, there are five, then, instead of four, convention conference requests. Motion to approve, together by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
I believe that concludes the agenda. Motion adjourned by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, you stand adjourned, 10:00 p.m.